Good evening and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board meeting. We are going to start with a Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, welcome back to another evening of, well, we've approved the budget, so now we'll talk about the warrant for the town meeting. The first thing on our agenda would be announcements, if we have any, Stephen?
Just a couple, Tom. One is, there's going to be, I don't know if the superintendent wants to expound upon the announcement, but there's going to be, on Monday, March 26th, which will be a week from tonight, at 7:00 PM, in the Long Meadow High School auditorium, there'll be a community training and discussion on preventing child sexual abuse in our community. Superintendent will be there, Police Chief John Stankowitz will also be there, and Jedid Byrne, your Director of Mass Kids, and the Enough Abuse Campaign. Sure it's going to be a well-attended event and an excellent program.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment. I mean, I, a lot of children, you know, are scared to talk about being sexually abused. I've worked with some adults, and I think the saddest situation was an individual who knew that his father had always said, "If anyone ever touches you, I'd kill him." And so, when he was sexually abused, he never could tell anyone, because he knew he would lose his father. And so, it's a very serious thing, you know, that we, children feel they can talk about it, that they have someone who will listen, but not, you know, totally destroy everything about the child. The child's lost enough already, if they've been abused, they wouldn't want to lose their own family also. I don't know if they'll bring that up in the presentation, but a lot of people make those kinds of comments, unfortunately. Any other announcements?
Just that there's another potential storm forecast for Tuesday over Wednesday. I've gotten pretty bad about predicting the weather and planning for it. We usually heard, we usually heard on the side of caution and ended up with really not much snowfall. That has saved us some money in snow and ice, so maybe I'll do that again. It seems to be working out.
You're thinking, by predicting it's going to be bad, it doesn't show up, it's going to save money?
Well, truthfully, I'm going to blame the superintendent, because I usually wait till he cancels school before I make an announcement about town offices, and so I usually follow his lead, so really, it's the superintendent's fault, if anything. No, I mean, we, you know, it's amazing, we all watch the same forecasts, and it all looks like it's going to be a certain way, and then it ends up very different, so. And I don't know what, I haven't watched the weather yet today, but just if there is something, just people need to be cautious.
Yes, well, the last one, they, they call it a nor'easter, and you could see that it was coming right up from the south, and I was like, how are they calling this?
Technically, it spun around, but it was a nor'easter for, it seems like a real part of Massachusetts, except for the Pioneer Valley.
Right, yeah.
So, that's, and I don't know, Paul, do you have any other announcements about due dates for any bills or anything? I know water bills are out.
Water bills are out, motor vehicle excise tax, the first billing should have been due a week or so ago, and the second billing will be going out towards the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to resident comments. Yes, step right down, have a seat, just introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you can go forward.
I'm here to follow up on a letter that I sent to the Select Board last week regarding about a proposal to eliminate some of the bylaws that protect the quality of life here in Long Meadow. It is difficult to understand where this is coming from and who this secretive task force actually is. They hold no public meetings, obtain no resident input, yet somehow have the ear of the Select Board. To me, it sounds like an end run by two or three town residents around the usual citizens' petition, or an attempt by a few town officials to bamboozle the Select Board with their own agenda while avoiding proper open meeting laws, and then fooling town meeting into thinking that this is an actual issue of Select Board concern. I will tell you that just by listening to the comments made by the town manager about this issue during your last two meetings, it is clear that this task force does not comprehend the thought process behind the bylaw, nor even the very basic definitions of a commercial vehicle as defined by Mass DOT and the town bylaws. So if these individuals are that ignorant of the basic facts, they certainly have no business advising the town's governing body. As provided to you in a handout, it is not just what a commercial vehicle is that makes it a problem in residential areas, but equally, or even more important, what it does. This is clearly defined by Mass DOT regulations and Mass Law Chapter 540, but is clearly not understood by your supposed advisory task force. Mr. Crane's contention that this bylaw is only used by squabbling neighbors to retaliate for other reasons is untrue, and what is going on in our neighborhood is a prime example. What you can see in the pictures presented is what can and has happened when the town bylaws regarding commercial vehicles, businesses, and rental properties are ignored by residents and proper enforcement is neglected by town officials. It creates dangerous situations, is unsightly, and drives down property values. It is not time to eliminate bylaws, it is time for this board to direct town officials to start properly enforcing them. This is a town that has rules regarding the height of one's lawn grass, but thinks that it would be a good idea to eliminate a bylaw that has let what happened to our neighborhood happen elsewhere? This is a town that doesn't allow lawn signs, but now is going to allow a van with a billboard on the side to be parked in every driveway 24/7? Every household will be able to have a rolling billboard on their property. Who needs lawn signs? Just get an EconLine van and have your company's advertisement or your favorite political slogan emblazoned on the side, and park it at the end of your driveway all day, every night and day. This is what the bylaw task force of experts are recommending that the Select Board endorse? It's absurd. Mr. Crane's statement that the enforcement of bylaws has created operational resource problems is misguided, as the enforcement of bylaws is just as much a part of and just as important a task as many others delegated to town officials. In fact, it is the inefficient process of bylaw enforcement that, if anything, has created these problems. The site visits and warnings to the same individuals who have numerous, consistent, and recurring violations, coupled with town officials' resistance to get serious with citations and fines, is what wastes operational resources. Unfortunately, warnings sometimes fall on deaf ears, and it takes punitive action to get some people's attention. As in the case in our neighborhood, when the town's inspector is still issuing warnings after his eighth visit to the same property, and is still unwilling to institute punitive action, that's the operational resource problem. Institute a specific escalating scale of warnings and punitive action, stop wasting town officials' time with countless warnings that accomplish nothing, and start getting neighborhoods like ours cleaned up. As one Select Board member stated last week, "Bylaws are for neighbors, not for violators." We have a right to the quality of life this town usually enjoys, and that quality is supposed to be ensured by town bylaws. Those bylaws need to be properly enforced and not eliminated. I ask that you not support any attempt to remove them, but to the contrary, direct town officials to begin to properly enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Do we have any other resident comments?
Can I ask that we get copies of that package, maybe? There's only one copy?
There's copies, there should be a copy for everyone.
The pictures.
We just don't have pictures for everyone. Is there another copy for Marie at the end?
If there was copies, then we accidentally sent them that way. I thought it was one large package.
Three, and then we have to give a copy to Marie.
Then we can scan.
Send them out like Tom. Is it, there was only one extra copy of this, huh?
Yeah, and, Mr. Fox, I assume those pictures were taken this winter, since no one got it?
Over in January.
October and January this year? Okay, thank you. All right, so, the next thing we would go to is our town manager, his report.
So, just a couple of quick updates. I know we've been talking about an announcement on the Tina Lane Crossing for some time. I did hear from Mass DOT, the, one of the first steps in the process of the flagging of the wetlands, as an initial step for the survey and design has been completed. And, like I said, having spoken with both Mass DOT and Amtrak, I have every expectation that we'll have a final agreement that'll cover the design and construction of the crossing in the very near future. I think, as you guys know, in the big organizations, these, getting the last legal comments nailed down before signatures can be made is usually one of the most time-consuming parts of it. But everyone seems to be committed to going in that direction. On our solar project, we have been, we, meeting the town and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, has been working with Cadmus Group for that project, which was funded through a grant from Mass DO, the Mass Department of Energy, Department of Energy Resources, DOE-R. That's a $12,400 grant, and again, the grant was to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they'll be overseeing the project. The next step will be a series of site visits with the Cadmus Group's project coordinator, and look at parking lots, rooftops, roof structures, the electrical grid in the vicinity of our properties, and they'll be developing a draft RFP, or an RFQ, depending on what their recommendation's going to be, and then a series of steps will unfold after that, and hopefully, issue a bid and have the bids reviewed by the completion date of the project, which will be May 1st of 2019. So, that'll be till the end, that'll be to get to us to award. So, there's a lot of steps in between now and May 1st, 2019.
And so, now, would they have solutions for things, like you said, a lot of, we have some opportunities, but they're too far away from the power lines?
They're just going to identify what the barriers are.
Okay.
It's really, it's a feasibility assessment.
All right.
WestCom, we're actually meeting tomorrow, and we're going to review the applications for executive directors that we've received. We've received a handful of those, and we're going to be reviewing some updated financial information that was prepared by a member of our consultant team that we've retained, kept on retainer, including the formula for a two-town rec as opposed to a four-town rec, and the staffing plan. Since the whole board has, since the WestCom Board of Directors hasn't really reviewed and commented on it, I can't really say, you know, what's going to be the final outcome, but I'll tell you that our hope of increasing services and reducing costs seems to be well within reach, based on the information that I saw on both the updated staffing plan and the updated formula. So, it's definitely moving in the right direction. And then, there's some DPW projects that we have pending. DPW facility, filed sub-bids are coming tomorrow, that's a big day, and then the general bids are due on April 5th. There's a walkthrough tomorrow for general contractor bidders of the current site. The energy modeling report, I've received a draft of it, and the early findings are that the equipment will be about a 35% efficiency over base energy code equipment. And so, that also, we can, we will be eligible for rebates from utility companies, and that 35% efficiency is a, gets us a higher rate of rebate. So, that's, that's good news. And then, this is a quick note, the feedback on the electronic bidding has been positive, and, you know, the electronic bidding, I think we're the second community in Western Mass to do that. I mean, the first, there was a project in Granby, I don't know if you were in that conversation, but there was a project in Granby, a school that they tried this out on, and so I think we're the second one. And like I said, the feedback's been very positive. Dwight Road, the Dwight Road Corridor Project, plans are finalized, I think the ad has been placed in the, in the bulletin of goods and services. Bids will be issued on the 22nd, tomorrow, and then they'll be due back on April 12th. And, as you know, we have some easements in the warrants, and we will be working on, in the meantime, on rights of entry for construction purposes, which may mitigate the need for the temporary easements. The permanent easements will be needed, but the temporary ones could perhaps be satisfied with the right of entry. So, we're, we have them in the warrant as placeholders, in case we need them, but we'll be working in the meantime with abutters and property owners to see if we can move forward without them. And then, Long Meadow Street intersection improvements, Andy Carr, town engineer, had a meeting with the Joint Transportation Committee, and they slotted us into the 2023 TIP. To really be placed on the TIP, you have to be a 25% design and have a public hearing, which we will expect will happen this summer. And then, it's pretty much a hurry-up-and-wait at that point, but we will be ready if other TIP projects encounter delays and our project can be advanced. And if you recall, Converse Street was an example of this, where we were at 25% design, but not scheduled for a, for a couple of years out for a TIP project, and other projects dropped off, and we were ready, we were ready and able to deliver the right-of-way that we needed to get the, to get the TIP funding, get placed on, on the TIP list to get the project going. So, I think we'll be, we'll be in the same position going forward on Long Meadow Street. So, on development projects, we have four big ones, or, I say big, four current ones that are of note. Obviously, the Young Mansion is continuing with their site design. There's a memory care facility on William Street that's being planned on William Street, the former synagogue site up by Turner Park. They're working on their project, I think I showed you guys that last week. Willie Ross has informally presented to the planning board about an expansion they want to do, and then the Big Y is planning for a renovation of their store. So, all four are obviously distinct projects, but our internal review team has gone through the four of them and generated some comments, and we'll be reaching back out to the project proponents and working with them as they finalize their plans. Obviously, our biggest thing is traffic, parking, and safety issues, and most of our comments fall along those lines, on those projects.
Stephen, I was just curious, now, the Willie Ross School project, they're, they're going to add an additional story on their administrative building, I guess, and?
They're going to put a two-story addition on, but it's kind of next to their two-story building, so they're not going to add stories to the?
To the current building.
To the current building, it's going to be two stories kind of next to the current building.
Okay, all right, and so, all right.
And I'll just be taking some time off in April. That's about it.
Yeah, any questions? Yeah, Marie.
You mentioned the TIP project for Long Meadow Street's going to be in 2023. Does that mean we're not going to work on the casino, updating of those lights until 2023?
That's the same project.
It's the same project, so we're combining them all, so we're going to be?
No, that's, that is the project.
That is the project, because I thought you were trying to get TIP to expand the casino project further south, so that we could get it all done at one time.
Initially, yes, I mean, they are still technically two separate projects, but when we, when Andy met with the Joint Transportation Committee and the precursor group, the planning committee that kind of lines up TIP projects, they had advised us that there were some large projects in other communities kind of ahead of us in line, and so we had, we had to prioritize what we wanted to go first, and it was the Long Meadow Street, the casino project, for lack of a better term. And so, like I said, I think, I think we're going to be sooner than that, and we may, we may have to discuss, do we want to go ahead and bond the project, and pay for it on the town side, and get it going sooner versus waiting for 2023? That's a, that's a decision that we'll have to, have to have, but if we wait and see if a slot opens up for us, you know, it may work out well, like Converse Street did.
And so, we are now at 25%, do we need to go further?
No, we will, we'll get to the 25% design over the summer.
Over the summer.
Probably, probably in July, and then have a hearing and get some community feedback, but I would guess by fall, we'll be ready if a spot opens up, we'll move forward.
I have one other question. On the, you mentioned a possibility of working on raised sidewalks on some areas. I know you had mentioned as a possibility in front of Community House. Are you considering when we do the development around the new Big Y of having more enhanced crosswalks there? And so, we might have raised crosswalks there also?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're still, we're still toying with, kicking the idea of raised crosswalks around. They, there are pros and cons to those, but that is an area that could make sense. But definitely, enhancing the pedestrian experience in that area, in that triangle area, is something that we are looking at, and looking at options for reducing traffic speeds, the weaving movements, and improving pedestrian safety. One of these we're also talking about is maybe doing a, I guess, kind of a slip lane off of Bliss Court for tractor trailers to do deliveries at the Big Y instead of the way they do it now, where they pull into William Street. So, there's a couple of?
I was going to ask you if that was part of this plan.
Yeah, so, we have, we have a design in mind for that. One concept could be to make it, not narrow the curbs necessarily, but make it a single lane of vehicle traffic and add bike lanes on both sides, and so you would kind of funnel it down to one lane of traffic, leaving enough width that if an emergency vehicle needed to get through there, someone could pull over the side and they could still get around. You know, it's just concepts at this point, but that's, that's kind of the eyes that really improve the pedestrian experience.
Because I noticed you had that, those roads on for this summer. Didn't you have, so, you don't have them on? Oh, I thought that was listed as one of the pavement projects for the summer, was Williams and Bliss.
We just cracked the old William Street and Bliss right in that area, so I doubt we have one of them.
Okay, all right, so I won't be concerned about where the design is at this point.
No, we wouldn't pave it without a design.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering, because I saw, I thought that's what we were, we're looking at this season.
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, and also, you had put together those boards, I was, I missed that part of the meeting. It would be nice to have those at town meeting, so people could see what the projects are coming up for this season.
I know they're, I think they're done, I just haven't gotten mine yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, Stephen, I just said, now, you know, that light, it isn't seem, it isn't working properly, that is by the CVS and Runaldies, where it will, instead of just staying green until a car approaches from the side street, you said there were some part issues there?
I think that's been fixed.
It wasn't fixed last time I went by, last time I got stuck in it.
First I've heard of it in weeks.
Oh, because you thought someone had?
Yeah, it's possible, sometimes if somebody's going right, or south on Long Meadow Street, coming up edge and going south, they'll trip the thing, but they won't be there when you come by, because they may go right on, I don't know, I mean, that's?
Yeah, I hadn't seen anyone, so I thought, I was, so you, you think it's?
My understanding was that it was fixed, but I'll double check.
All right, because I was wondering if, because that won't be included in this project?
No.
Wouldn't go that far down, just goes to Converse Street, basically.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for town manager, or report? Okay, let's take care of some quick business, the old business, we have approvals of minutes, somebody want to make a motion to approve the, I don't know, for March 5th? Anyone there?
Was I at that one?
I make, a motion to accept the, approve the minutes of March 5th.
Second.
Okay, so, I, I don't remember if you were there, I think you may have been there.
Yeah, I think I was at the 5th, but I missed part of the budget meeting, the budget forum.
Okay, so, all those in favor? Okay, March 12th?
I move you accept the minutes to March 12th.
Budget forum, I'll second this. I think, it's just?
There are only two of us here.
I don't know, there's just two of us, so we can't really do anything.
Yeah, you can vote, can't you? Or it just doesn't pass, then?
I don't see a reason you can't vote. We have a quorum.
All right, so we'll vote, all those in favor?
I mean, we're going to have to abstain.
And two abstentions, yeah, we have a quorum, okay, and then, March 14th?
Two for, two abstentions.
Two for, two abstentions?
I move you accept the minutes of the March 14th special meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
One abstention.
Okay, great. So, the second thing is, old business, sort of the school committee presentation of middle school SOIs, which this was, they were submitted last year, so please, yes, move on, Marty and Russ, join in, and we'll, we'll go through it again.
So, thanks for having us. We'll spare you the PowerPoint tonight, but we are interested, once again, as a school committee and school department, in making an application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to address the needs of our two middle schools. So, I know the Select Board's familiar with the MSBA, but the MSBA is a state agency that enjoys, I guess, a penny on every dollar from the sales tax, so they have a dedicated revenue stream, and they work with local communities to identify solutions to address the deficiencies in school buildings, and so, in ways that are educationally appropriate and ways that are fiscally responsible. So, last year, we came to you with two statements of interest to address the needs of our two middle schools, Glenrook Middle School and Williams Middle School, and the school committee had approved it last year, and the Select Board had approved it last year, and we made application to the state with those two statements of interest. We seemed to get some level of attention from the state, but ultimately, the applications, we were not invited into the MSBA's program, and so, we would like to submit again with two statements of interest, yeah.
Can I ask a question when you're at that? You don't get any feedback, do you?
None, yeah, unfortunately, and sometimes?
So, you might have been number, the next one, or you might have been 50 away.
Correct, it's a, it's a, it's a bit of a black box, they don't offer much feedback, they, they would say that there's not a queue, but, you know, some, some of my superintendent colleagues might disagree with that, they feel like you do have to kind of work your way through the process a few times before you get their attention in real ways. So, as we said last year, I think we, we have two schools that are, they're well-cared-for, they're well-maintained, there have been capital expenditures dedicated to the two buildings, but I think the, the conclusion we've come to is that the, the needs of the building really exceed what regular custodial care, regular maintenance care, and regular capital expenditures can address, and so, with these two statements of interest, we would hope to work with the state to identify solutions to address the needs of the two buildings. Neither building has experienced a renovation in their 50 or so years that they've been in existence, and, you know, so clearly, in my view at least, something needs to be done, and with the statement of interest, I think, you know, a lot of folks will ask, well, what's the plan? There is a certain amount of ambiguity that you have to tolerate as you, as you submit statements of interest, there is, you know, you really work with the state and the local community to identify the best solution, you don't go into the process with the, the end in mind necessarily. So, you know, that, we're at the beginning of the conversation, and so we're hopeful that the Select Board will approve the school committee's decision to submit statements of interest to the MSBA, and we're happy to answer any and all questions. You have the two documents, we rewrote them considerably last year, and they were updated with kind of a new narrative and a new story, really. This year, we bring it back to you with simply updates to some fiscal information and some of the dates, so that they haven't changed in any substantive way since the documents that you saw last year, so. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. I think Debbie has the vote language, if that comes up tonight.
I'd just like to have, to have some comments from Russ about the school committee, you know, when they looked this over, was there anything new that they, that if, any new ideas that have surfaced that the school committee would want to share with the Select Board?
As far as the statement of interest itself, no.
For the, okay.
But I think, one thing that did come up in some conversation is, so we talked about the, you know, the potential of one building, that's always been out there. There's also a number of schools that have been looking at K-8 schools, and so, there's some research that says that's actually a better model, the less transitions between schools, the better. Physically, it could be a better model, too, because you only have three buildings instead of five, so. The dilemma we have in our town, and I think that's something MSBA should probably look at, but? at, but the dilemma is the amount of space we have at each elementary school you'd have to add on, and there's not a whole lot of space at center, for example. Wolf Swamp and Blueberry, there's a little bit more space or land around it. But I think MSBA would come in and look at all the different options and try to give us the best approach, but I think that's, that's an interesting concept if it could work. I, I don't know what the town would think of it, there's been really no discussion, you know, a real discussion by the committee, just something that kind of came up as something other areas' schools are doing.
Is this something that, that the MSBA would recommend?
The MSBA always says they want to be a partner with you, so they'll, they don't really make recommendations per se, but if, if we said we're willing to look at that idea, they certainly would go down that route. I mean, for them, it's much better, because they only have the potential of three buildings that they have to, you know, look at funding at some point in the future as opposed to five, so they always like that. If you can consolidate, MSBA, you know, would prefer that, just like regionalization with school system in general.
Sure, yeah.
Well, now, excuse me, one more thing, Tom. Are you, are we in a position to, have we studied this enough to know if it's feasible, Russ, or-
No.
Right now, it's just kind of-
That would be, that's actually kind of the point of this SOI, is so that we can get MSBA to come in and we spend resources, money and resources, looking at all these different options.
Okay.
And then what happens is with the community and input, school committee, you know, the board, everybody, I think MSBA tries to judge, you know, what's the appetite for the community? If the appetite for the community is no way in hell are we gonna do K-8, they're not gonna pursue that, but if you thought that was an interesting idea, they might pursue it. If we had the land and we had the space, and it wouldn't cost more than just doing one middle school or, you know, renovating two middle schools.
So then if this is approved, then that, that avenue will be looked at by the study group?
Yeah, it definitely could be.
So the first stage, if you're invited into the program, is to conduct a feasibility study, and that, that stage alone, that in and of itself would require town approval. And so those feasibility studies are very ambitious undertakings, they're, you know, typically six, sometimes seven-figure undertakings, so.
From my perspective as a committee member, I'd want them to look at every avenue, because we have such a tight budgetary situation with the levy ceiling. I think we have to look at ways to be efficient as a town, and that might be one way to do it, and the research shows it's a, it's a better model. I think it may not be possible because there's not enough land, the committee hasn't even talked about it, I'm just talking as a committee member.
One of the, one of the things we said in the SOI was that, that Long Meadow is open to exploring a range of options to address the needs of Williams and Glenbrook, up to and including consolidating. The district is hopeful that an MSBA-sponsored feasibility study would allow the district to explore the cost-effectiveness of all options in order to ensure that the district has middle school facilities that will serve the needs of students for the next 50 years, so. You're really, you know, you're inviting that consideration of a, of a range of options.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, because I recently was talking to a parent who lives in a town where there's, you know, one middle school and one high school, and she just was very unhappy with that setup, you know, she was feeling like the town seemed a lot smaller for her children in terms of educational experiences and so forth, so this sounds pretty exciting, you know, looking at K-8, and now-
Well, and I'm just throwing, I mean, that's like a random idea, and the committee had some really, like, two minutes of conversation about, I'm just throwing it out as they'll look at everything, and that's one of the things they could look at.
And would that, I don't know, who could, would it be less expensive to put additions on? I would think it would be. No, not always.
That, that's what you would, that's, I think, what the feasibility study would determine, really, you know. I always, whenever I talk to parents about this, I always say, I'm, I'm not an architect or an engineer, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't even, you know, I'd be really cautious about guessing on those things. We did, there was a, a study, you'll recall, that, that the town had commissioned back in 2008, and then it was revised in 2015 by J C J Architects, and so we have some, at least conceptual idea of what, you know, a, a middle school consolidation would, would cost, but even those figures have to be kind of approached with a lot of caution, I'd say.
Sure, okay.
So they could, they would actually, when they go through their initial study, could actually say to you, we think you should consolidate, we think you should build two new ones, or repair what you're at?
So one of the first things that happens is they, they study your enrollment trends and projections, and so they, they certify your enrollment based on past and future, and so that becomes kind of a foundation for what the feasibility study would look like. But they'll also point the feasibility study in a direction that they think is suitable for the community and what the, what the community wants, so if, if we said from the get-go that, you know, we wanted a, a K-8 model or consolidated 6-8 model, you know, whatever we, whatever we directed them towards, they're going to work within those parameters, so. It really, you know, as Russ said, it, it really is that, that partnership, you know, they, they don't want to put their resources and time into a, into a model that they don't think is politically sustainable in a, in a local community.
And really, when we did last year, we went through, we did a whole bunch of open houses and things like that at different schools, and we talked a lot more about, you know, the two buildings and maybe doing one building. The K-8 idea is just something that happened to come out in the news recently, you know, the last six months or so. So that's not something that we've really gauged the community at all, it's really not something that's, I think we've talked to MSBA about at all, it's just something that came up, but I think it's worth MSBA thinking about that concept too. It's probably, you know, the third concept out there that's possible, there'd have to be a lot more discussion about that, though, with the community.
And, and last year, the state building funding group came out and looked at our facilities, and so would they just keep, use that same information, or would they come back, do you think, or?
I don't think they would come back again, so they sent this sort of, they call it senior study team out, and architects, engineers that they contract with, and they, they kind of did a top-to-bottom review of both schools, so I think they have a handle on the needs of our buildings now, so I, I don't think they'd come out for that a second time, you know, but, you know, if we ever were invited into the program, I'm sure we would, they'd be visiting us again.
That's how it works, okay, great. Do we have any other questions on this?
Was Williams one of the schools that had a new boiler put in? No?
A couple of years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe three or four years ago?
Next.
What's that?
Yeah.
Tom, I should, I should have one more thing too. So, the committee did also vote that we need to look at, because it's possible this just doesn't go through at the MSBA for years, so we, we're gonna try and come up with a plan for what would we do with the current buildings, you know, a timeline of what needs to happen, because we haven't been submitting to you projects for the middle schools, really, purposely, but if this doesn't happen, you know, in time for us to avoid, like, the, the roof repairs and things like that, we need a plan for what do we do with the current buildings. So the committee's gonna be working on that too, so we have a plan for both avenues.
Okay, and, and I know Stephen informed us, they did a thorough cleaning of all the ducts and all the air conditioning in some of the schools?
We do continue to maintain buildings, and, and maintain beyond just custodial care, I mean, we do, we did the air handling, we did the air vents on Glenbrook, as Bill noted, we did the boiler at Williams, when they have needs that they, when it's something that they need to stay in operation, we do make the repairs or make the investment. So we're, you know, maintaining our current building, to both buildings.
Yeah, all right, great, so, so I guess we would look for a motion for the floor, the committee?
Clerks, I would imagine the clerical register, so likely one.
Okay.
Think we have to read that whole motion?
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
Well, we can read the one, then just say that the second one reads the same.
Different, two different schools, and I, and I think as part of the motion, I'll just say, in case it catches your attention, the school committee had to designate one school or the other as the priority SOI. Glenbrook was designated as the priority because of the safety and security concerns that, you know, the sort of the unique safety and security concerns that are associated with Glenbrook, so if that catches your attention, we could talk more about that, but I just wanted to alert you to that.
So they're not mere, one motion is different than the other?
They reference, they reference different properties and different addresses and different-
And different priorities, so does one say-
The same, the same priorities, the, the overall priorities are the same, but it's just that Glenbrook was, you have, when you submit two SOIs, a district has to submit one as the priority.
So that isn't in the motion now?
That, I couldn't recall if that was or was not in the motion, but what is in the motion, I guess, is the, the priorities you have to identify with the MSBA in terms of what needs you are trying to address, so.
But the MSBA wants you to read the whole motion and certify each one later in the process, so we did, we had to do the same thing, unfortunately.
Sure we should have brought the tape.
Some questions, yeah.
Ready? You throw it all primed up? You throw it all primed up?
Yeah. Resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on March 19th, 2018, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the select board of the town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated March 14th, 2018, for the Williams Middle School located at 410 Williams Street, Long Meadow, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we move on to vote, all those in favor? Okay. So now we move on to the next.
Resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on March 19th, 2018, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the select board of the town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 14th, 2018, for the Glenbook Middle School located at 110 Cambridge Circle, Long Meadow, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, or, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? All right.
Good job, guys.
Thanks a lot, appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Good night, good night.
All right, so we have some new business things to deal with. Should we quickly go through the approvals? We have a couple approvals. We have approval for one-day liquor license for lacrosse fundraiser, somebody want to make a motion on that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yeah?
Are there gonna be persons under 21 in attendance?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, that block was left open.
Mm-hmm.
I honestly don't know anybody.
And do they have the insurance, do they fill out everything they needed to?
They do, they brought everything to me.
And did, and the police chief, I guess, even though he says it wasn't required, okay. It's gonna be bear in mind, okay. And they, I guess they don't need a rain date, because it's gonna be in the community house?
Inside, and it's tickets, it's a comedian, it doesn't sound like it's something that students would be, ever be invited to be around.
Well, no, it's a fundraiser.
It's a fundraiser, a comedian.
And you could have students there, very likely could have students there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I had the same question Marie asked, gonna ask.
Probably they're not sure.
Yeah, it could be, but they, they need to, I think they need to acknowledge one way or the other, because it could, it could influence the law enforcement element.
Right, so we could approve it, you know, under the condition that there would be no one under 21? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, they might have, they might have students helping out to be, or giving out information or something, yeah.
Debbie's, Debbie was gonna call them real quick and see if she can get verification on it, if you want to move on to another item.
Yeah, the hours are 6:00 to 10:00 P.M., so I think it's conceived of as an evening, a nighttime event.
Okay, well, the, we also have a seasonal liquor license that Club Cafe, 167 Dwight Road, says that is the premises, but is that accurate?
I think this is the golf course.
That's what I thought. Why did they give that, what was that address?
What's that?
Why is it having the top 167 Dwight Road?
617, 617 Dwight Road.
617 Dwight Road.
That's the Franconia, their clubhouse is in Long Meadow.
The clubhouse in Franconia, okay.
Is it, is this for the cart, the seasonal?
The 19th hole, right?
For the bar there.
For the bar, it's David Restaurant Bar.
Yeah.
I didn't recall us doing the seasonal, I guess we do it every year, a seasonal just for the, yeah, because it's shut down in the winter?
Yeah, not much happened there in the winter.
Well, you can drink.
That's good it's shut down.
Yeah, they, they close in the winter.
Okay.
Yeah, Marie?
By the end of the summer, I understand that the enlarged catering facility that is supposed to be funded by MGM is gonna go over there, so would this cover all that, the clubhouse café?
It depends on where that is. The licensed premises is just the bar in the clubhouse.
That one small bar area, okay, so if they expand it, they'd have to come back to us?
I do not believe this covers the bev cart, because the licensed premises of the bev cart is the course, and most of the course is in Sprang Hill.
I think in the past, we, we covered the cart too.
It, it may, it's not a bev question.
Okay.
Right.
Well, let's keep an eye on that, because there might be more food being sold at, once they expand.
Yeah, that's a question for, hang on a second.
Okay.
Okay, I present a mo, present a motion that we approve the license.
This one?
Yeah, for the, yeah, one?
Second.
Okay, second, any other discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Debbie just reported, Tom, she was unable to get in touch with that person-
Okay.
To verify if there's any students or underage people present.
So, this event is gonna be on May 5th, do we want to just table it till the next?
I'd say we approve it under the condition that we're gonna assume there will be no children there, and that if there's children present, we may have to run it back to law enforcement.
Okay, that would be fair enough.
So is that gonna be your motion?
Yeah, place motion we approve based, and she'll, she'll contact them tomorrow, so it may come back before the board.
Second.
Second, okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved, and then we need to look at the, there's requests for the, just see here, appoint, registers of voters, we need to appoint three folks to that, three people to that. We need to appoint three folks to that, three people to that. And we have the names of a few people here.
Well, I think that there's, we're supposed to put one person in.
Yeah, one.
Because Steve Kennedy is.
He's hiring. That's the way I read it, too, Marie. There's, there's only one appointment that actually is open right now. It's a Democratic, Democrat, is that correct, Debbie?
Still gotta hold on.
One opening, that's for the Democratic party.
Expiring. But is he asking to be reappointed?
Yeah.
Because I thought he wasn't.
It has to be the nominee.
Let's see what, what was that?
Because, I know that.
Oh, they are, so the Democrats are nominating Steve Kennedy.
They have Stephen Kennedy, yeah.
Right.
But I thought Manny Winnick was the last person we put on.
Who?
Manny was, he's on that other list.
He's terminated in 2019.
And they have Stephen Kennedy, okay, he's highlighted, so he's the one that we need just to reappoint. So do I have a motion to reappoint Stephen Kennedy?
I'm confused, though. Who do we have off?
Because he's highlighted here.
We have, he's highlighted because that's the vacant spot.
That's the vacant spot.
But they're also asking to.
In the two chairs of the committees, send letters in.
So you have, right, because you have one Republican, two Democrats, one, Stephen Kennedy needs to retire, or it needs to be reappointed, so you have a choice of whether you're going to put in.
Put him in or another Republican.
Stephen Kennedy or Peter Boobier.
Okay. And so it would be, I guess it would be appropriate to swing it back. I mean, we've, we've sort of had two of one, and two Democrats, one Republican, and two Republicans and one Democrat.
It's frustrating why we can't just have two, too, but.
Yeah.
So I move we put Peter Boobier in.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, why, why don't, can we change that?
Remember, we had that discussion, and I wasn't sure whether we had to, if that, we had to.
My recollection was you had to have each one of the parties represented. So you minimally had to have one Republican and one Democrat.
Yeah. And there is four slots, but the other ones are unrolled.
No, there's only three slots.
There's only three slots, but.
The, the town clerk would be the person.
Well, yeah, but so does the county mix. You've only got three slots.
Yeah.
So I guess the question goes back is, why can't? And I remember we had to take two extra steps to make it four. And I wasn't sure if that was a charter. That's not a charter issue, is it?
No.
Is it state statute?
I do, I don't remember what the outcome was, but I do remember we went, looked at this, went back to it, and this structure we have now was a result of some reexamination of it. So, and I think the biggest thing was stuck with the ones that have been there for a while. Like, it was an incumbency thing, to be honest with you.
Well, I don't believe.
Of the registrars, not of the candidates.
No, I'm saying I don't believe that Peter Boobier's been in for a while.
No, but the ones that are on there now have been there for a while.
Yes, yeah, the ones that are currently there.
Right.
Well, that's, I guess, it's, they're nominated by the two parties.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Well, we can always ask again, but, because I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I know we had a discussion on it. And I guess, you know, if we're, item's open for discussion, I would assume.
Yes, yes, yeah.
This is, this is a thing where if we're gonna move these back and forth, we likely need to have a policy instead of having the discussion take place every time. Because I think the policy would likely look, it would make us look better on this issue. Because this could easy become a partisan issue on this board, and I don't think it needs to.
Right.
And I don't, I don't, I don't have any feelings which way we go back and forth, it doesn't matter, but I mean, we've got, both the parties have submitted candidates for this, and we're just arbitrarily gonna change it back to Republicans and be what two Republicans and one, one Democrat. And I, and I don't have a problem with that as long as there's a reason why we're doing this.
Right.
And I think with this being that we're a non-political party, I think we need a policy that addresses what we want to do on this in the future.
Switches every year.
Do you want to, you want to do that?
What's that?
You want to work on a policy?
No, but you know what I mean, Marie? I think, I think, make a policy.
It makes life easier for us.
Makes life easier, yeah, because we're, you know, anybody can sit there and call shots the way they want.
In the future, okay.
So you want, you've nominated people, yeah, okay, I'll second nomination.
Okay, so for the present, we can vote on this, and then we should just have a written policy about, you know, just switching it back to one, two.
Or if we can go back and see if we have to write a letter to the Secretary of State or whatever we had to do to make it four.
Yeah.
Then make that, that makes our life a lot easier.
It makes it a lot, a lot easier.
Okay. Okay, so we're ready to vote then? All those in favor? Okay. Done, approved. Thank you. And next, we have the, the close and sign the annual town meeting warrant. We've been all waiting for.
Which is the, the, the most recent one, the hard copy or the one that was?
Got one tonight. Just got one that's happening.
Well, you got one, you got one in your email from me at like four-ish.
So that's not this?
That is this.
Oh, it is this?
Okay. Okay.
And is this highlighted, the articles that we passed over?
That have not been done.
Right, those are the ones we need to act upon.
All right, so, so we need to go and, I guess we could start with Article Two, which we need to get the last numbers on, which we have.
Article Two, which reduced $50,000 from the previous draft. I had asked Mario to provide an update on what he thought the ending numbers would be, and he was very comfortable with the $250,000 estimate as opposed to the $300,000 that was originally there.
Okay.
But last, last year now, we put this in, and you adjusted by that on town meeting, put the actual figure in.
Right. Certainly if there's an actual number that is varying any significant amount, we can, we can modify this within the motion on the floor.
Usually by the time we get to town meeting, we know the number.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, with, you know, you said a potential snow event on Wednesday that, you know.
Well, I just said last year, you adjusted on the town floor.
Right. We may do that again this year, too.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on Article Two? Accepted. Marie?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and then we'll move to Article 13?
Nope.
No?
Article Five. There is a new Article Five.
A new Article Five, okay.
Does that mean all the other numbers changed? It doesn't matter, we approved them.
You approved the content, though.
The content.
The highlighted things haven't changed. So the ones that are highlighted still need action. The number of them, the, just the numbers changed.
Right. It's just the highlighted ones on the electronic copy are gonna be different than this.
We'll have to double check that to make sure we have that all right.
Terms of numbers, so.
Okay. So I emailed the board about this. This is kind of a late-breaking thing, unfortunately. This afternoon, actually, while Debbie was sending out supplement information, including the earlier version of the warrant, I was meeting first with the police chief and then with the fire chief, and unbeknownst to each of them, they both were having the same issue, and that is their overtime budgets are trending high, and the circumstances are similar for both in that they've had extended absences in their departments due to either illness or injury. And when you have an extended absence, you fill the shift with someone on overtime, so to maintain staffing levels, their, their overtime budgets have gone up. In some cases, they have not had to spend the salary line items, but it's a one-to-one and a half trade when you're using overtime. So typically, this would be something that we would wait till the end of the year, try and figure out, but, and maybe you do, within public, the public safety function, you could maybe transfer some money around to cover it. I know they both, both chiefs separately were really trying to find a way to not have to ask for additional funds, but their line item expenditures are, you know, kind of on point right now, and so I suggested to Paul that since we've reduced the snow and ice article by 50,000, we take that 50,000 and request more money for overtime from town meeting. Couple of factors, in addition to the injuries and illnesses, and as I said, you know, we could certainly meet at a regular meeting during executive session and go over that in greater detail as it relates to individual employees. But the big thing is, the police department, if you look at the, the past budget, the FY18 budget we're in now, the expenditure line had been tracking over 250,000, but we thought with some changes and some promotions that they had done, that we were gonna be able to reduce that amount. So they got a lesser amount in overtime than they requested and less than they expended in last years. The fire department, again, we thought with the reorganization, which was projected to save overtime, we would be able to come in, we reduced their overtime number by, I think, 20,000, from 230,000 last year to 210,000 this year. You know, and then, and then circumstances were, you know, like I said, were unfavorable in terms of the vacancies. So that's, that is primarily why we're in this situation.
I guess I'm kind of confused, because this is projected for.
FY18. This is the current year's budget.
This is the current year's budget to cover the current year, okay.
This is not a supplement to the budget you approved last Wednesday. This is a supplement to the current year's budget.
To the current budget, okay. That makes it easier for me to understand. And, but we have some folks who are graduating from the fire academy, and so that would probably improve the situation for next year?
I think going forward, yes, but the, the injuries and illness vacancies still have, the money's already been spent in many ways.
No, I know, I, I'm just thinking for next year, for going forward.
I mean, I think they, you know, or we get the people who have been on a long-term injuries, get them back to work, or, you know, you know, some form of retirement or something like that.
And do the police have anyone in academy?
No, I don't know.
No, I didn't think so. Okay. But we have at least two people in the fire academy, so.
Don't I recall that you were gonna devote some money towards getting any specialists to work on that?
To work on what?
To work on our OWCPU program to get some of these people back to work or get these resolution on some of these claims?
I think, I think that's where we hired, hired the outfit.
Meditrol.
Meditrol.
It's a law firm.
Right.
And yes, we have.
And we have one retiree from the fire department who recently got his disability retirement. We have one, I believe, there are, another one has a panel hearing tomorrow with, with his doctors to see how his application for disability retirement is going, and there's one pending case that Meditrol's been actively involved with, with day one, that we've submitted, the town submitted a retirement application on behalf of that employee.
So, so to answer the question, I said, I don't want to get into too great a detail, but to answer your question, yes, we brought them in, and that's actually accelerated the pace of these cases quite a bit, but, but we still have the vacancies. We, I think, I think both, I don't want to speak for Paul, but I think going forward, what we've learned over the last three, four months since we retained Meditrol will certainly save us a lot of time in the future. But the, the issues that we have are somewhat persistent.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And, and like I said, some, some of it is, are, are issues that have been persistent. Some of them are things that were just completely unexpected.
Right.
And, and not necess, well, I said not necessarily work-related, but, you know, some of it's just unlucky.
Well, do we have a motion for Article Five?
So move.
Second? Okay. And all those in favor? All right. We move to Article 14.
I'm moved to approve Article 14.
Second? Okay. Open for discussion. This is for funding of the appropriated sum of $14 million, purpose of constructing and furnishing a new council of aging facility.
That's not 14, or is four, or they moved it?
Yeah, it's 14.
Oh, excuse me, I'm on the old 14.
Okay. Fine, yeah, 14.
And I reviewed it with the COA board, and they decided they wanted to go ahead with the one-warrant article.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why we hesitated to pass it the other week, and so we're gonna, not gonna, I'm withdrawing my recommendation of possible two-warrant articles.
Okay. And so folks who are watching who may not be that much in tune, you want to explain what, if there, one article, if there was two articles, it would just be the second one would?
Well, it'd be the, there's the, the senior center, and the design came with a very large gymnasium, and the gymnasium is very important for the programming and for the active seniors. It did increase the, the costs. I think we got some numbers from our Paul Postergic, which told us what the increase would be in the taxes, but after reviewing it with the COA board, it was decided that it really is an integral part of the success of the center, and that they're gonna go ask, not split it, but this is the full plan, and that's the way it should be presented to the community.
Okay. And it's, that gym would not be exclusively used by seniors in the community?
No, it could be a real revenue resource, because when the senior programming ends on the weekends or some evenings, I know that our current director down there has expanded programs for the evenings, and we would be able to, they'd be able to rent and be able to make revenue off that to some of the sports groups. I think that one of the reasons that the town manager and the building committee were looking for the gymnasium is not only for active seniors, but with a lot of groups, programming has really expanded in the gymnasium they have down there now, and in the future, we've, I'd say Parks and Rec is short a gymnasium, they said, in town, and if we do end up merging our middle schools, will we be even more short in gym space? But I, I think that it was decided, this is really an integral part of the mission of the Council of Aging, which is active seniors. And as you were saying the other day, it's a very important part of healthy aging, and the gymnasium would provide that, whether it's dance or yoga or pickleball, and they would have no problem programming that out. So decided to go ahead with the, the wonderful plan that was created by the architect and the building committee.
I just, I just hope they have indoor rock climbing, because I'm not that far away from using that.
It's high on seniors' activities.
The, Tom and Jean LaCucusa Memorial Rock climbing. Naming rights opportunity, Tom, just saying.
Congressman John Olver was rock climbing well into his 70s.
And I'm sure that's very pertinent to this meeting.
So if I can just add, I know there's been some questions asked about, you know, reuse of Greenwood and things like that, and we are actively engaged in working on some reuse strategies that are, are really conceptual in nature, but also looking at what are the revenue opportunities and, you know, you know, we don't really charge for the gym space now, but mostly because it's almost totally inadequate, the gym space at Greenwood. But if you had a premier gym facility, then there should be some fee associated with that. I know the high school sometimes charges for use of the gym space because it's a quality gym space worth, worth a fee. People pay the fee if it's a quality space.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's one of the things we are looking at. So we, I think in advance of town, or when these questions get raised at town meeting and before, we'll have, we'll have some information provided.
Will you be presenting that to the Select Board, you think, before town meeting?
Sure.
So we could get an idea of it, and also probably the building committee. I know it's, it's been brought up. I know it's, it's been brought up, they'd be interested to hear what's going to happen with Greenwood too, but we would love to hear when you get your plan together.
Well, I would just say that I've been hearing from folks in town a long time about the senior center, and so I know, I believe the residents will want to vote on this, and so I would want to put it on the warrant.
Well, I think what we saw, it's, it's really going to be a jewel for Long Meadow and enhancement of our resources and facilities, not just for the aging population, which is going to be, I would say, I think we're looking at one-third of the one, not one-half of us by the time we get this all built, but the whole town.
Yeah.
I'm going to abstain from this focus. I wasn't here for the discussion on any of this.
Oh, you missed the discussion presentation.
And I had a lot of questions on this particular issue.
Oh, on the building presentation.
It was directed more or less to the town manager on reuse of property, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I just told you we're working.
Yeah, I know, you didn't, it's not near to the satisfaction I wanted answers for. And I wasn't here for the discussion, which I would have gave you exact points that I wanted answers on. So I wasn't here, so I'll abstain.
Okay.
I'll abstain from the rest of the issues too, because I wasn't here for any of the discussions you've had unless there's a, a new issue that's just been put on that we can discuss tonight.
Okay.
I do have some comments I'll make in closing, but I'm going to abstain from voting on them.
Well, we would appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay.
I think we'll give their comments, I believe we will. All right, any further discussion, I guess? So we'll call the vote. All those in favor of this article?
And one abstention.
And one abstention. All right, so now we move to Article 15, which is appropriation. Does someone want to make a motion?
If I can actually, well, I need to amend that amount by a certain dollar value. The new amount should be 97,400. The 104,500 that I originally had in there is, would be the tax bill to be associated with that property, but this DIF budget is to be the incremental taxes. So I needed to subtract the original tax bill that they were paying, and that amount will be 97,400.
Okay, could you explain how that works with the DIF?
In this particular case, the 97,400 that we're expecting, additional incremental tax revenue, would be used to pay off the debt service that is being applied or being bid at this point in time for the Dwight Road corridor project, 2.5 million dollar bond issued that the town meeting authorized last year. So this will be the first year that we'll be able, we'll probably bid it when we do, we'll probably issue the bond when we issue the DPW bond, to kind of have some economies of scales and save some money on the issuance cost. But that 97,400 will be applied to the debt service though for that first in FY19.
Okay, but we would, in that year, will we be getting tax revenue from that property?
In total, we're expecting 104,500.
Okay, all right. So, so when you say rose and raise and appropriate, it's basically because it's going to affect that property specifically?
Right, right. That's going to add to our new growth, but it has to be set aside for that particular project.
Okay.
And at the next meeting, I'll have a letter for you that will actually need to, as part of the DIF program, we actually need to, what is called the percentage capture. I'm looking to capture 100% of those incremental revenues for FY19. I think what we'll find in the future years is that we'll be able to pay debt service and above and beyond that, have some money come back into the general fund from that project, and any other project that goes on in Long Meadow on there, that will be kind of icing on the cake. But I think there will be some extra money out of the original DIF project to come to the general fund.
And do we have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? One abstention.
One abstention.
So we move to Article 19.
And the reason we didn't do this one before, I don't remember.
You need to check it out with the town council, right, Stephen?
Yeah, so we did forward, there was a couple of these, where the town council had some comments about the CPA articles. I did forward those to the CPA chair, but we didn't, didn't get the chance to kind of connect, and the CPA didn't get a chance to meet again. So I spoke to both of them today, and there were some comments on it. He made comments in some of the summaries, did we incorporate those?
No, we didn't. I didn't do anything on those.
All right. He has a couple of comments on some of the summaries to clarify that this is within the intent of the act and things like that. We need to make sure to make those changes, but in terms of the content of the article, what we worked out was we were going to recommend keeping them on the warrant, and that between now and town meeting, have town council meet with the chair of the CPA, and then have to give the CPA, the committee, the chance to review town council's opinion on those individual articles, and then if they want to withdraw them on the floor, they can do that.
So the CPA's standing by there?
Yeah, I just think they haven't had a chance to, they haven't had a chance to hear from town council on the, on his view, and I don't think anything is extreme. There were in the past, there's been things where he said, you know, you said, you can't get his case law, you can't do this one. These are all things that are his view of the statute, so they want a chance to talk it out a little bit. And, you know, given what we know about CPA articles, you know, needing to be put on the warrant, neither of them felt the issues were strong enough to unilaterally take it off the warrant. So they're going to continue the dialogue, and like I said, if, if they decide the town council's viewpoint on it is, is correct, then they will, then they'll take it off, they'll withdraw it on the floor.
Okay, I move to approve Article 19.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, now, did we do Article?
Same with 20.
Article 18, did we approve that? I didn't think we did for Bliss Park.
We did.
Okay. So we go to Article 20.
Same thing.
There's two Bliss Park, that's what it is. I see, we approved one, but not the second. Okay.
I move to approve 20.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, so this is to approve the purchase of trees and picket tables of Bliss Park. Any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? All right. And we will move to Article 24.
Same thing.
Same thing. This is feasibility study of the former train station. Our town council looked at that, and now it's in the same position as the other articles. Do we have a motion to accept 24?
Move to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor? Abstention, what? Okay, we go to Article 27, which is to authorize following land parcels, the right of land parcels and sound along Meadow to allow construction, roadway improvement, and the project knows the road corridor improvements, the DIF, which is the Converse Street, Dwight Road corridor. Do we have a motion to accept that?
Second.
Oh, did you motion it?
No, I haven't done that yet. I guess I move to accept so we can discuss it.
Okay, in a second, okay. And discussion?
Yeah, my question is, the attorneys, I mean, we've had problems in the past with easements, this is all, the attorney said this is the way we have to do it. There's no other wording or things that we need to do?
I, I believe the wording is good. They did review the right-of-way plan. Town council did prepare these articles. The only thing that was kind of on hold was, you know, an amount. Again, between now and town meeting vote, I expect that we'll either know that temporary easements won't be needed because we'll have construction access agreements, and we are fairly certain, not fairly, I mean, highly certain, that the permanent easements, the permanent easement and the fee interest in the property will be donated, because those are both on the developer's property. So we don't anticipate that we'll actually need a sum of money to acquire these necessary rights of way. I mean, our hope is, other than the permanent easement and the fee interest, we won't need the temporary easements at all from town meeting, that we will be able to have gotten the entry we need just for the construction purposes. Because what we're really talking about is sidewalk installation, and so people who are doing the, constructing sidewalks and putting in the forms and everything, it's a five-foot buffer, so when they're walking, they can stand on that ground, and then they restore everything back. The ones that are meaningful are the permanent easements and the fee interest acquisition to expand the right-of-way. Like I said, those, we anticipate those to be donated.
And all this has been reviewed by planning board, it's all part of the original plans.
Right. And as you know, on Converse Street, they've taken the sidewalks up to, just shy of the intersection, and they have a crosswalk, but this would continue those sidewalks right around the corner?
Yeah, right now, there are no sidewalks and bike lanes on Dwight Road. This would install bike lanes and sidewalks connecting Williams and Converse. And we actually have a bid alternate to route the sidewalk around by Kinder Care and connect it down to Churchill, which would then now connect you to Long Meadow Street on the sidewalk. It'll get you all the way to the center, all the way through town.
Yeah, that'd be, that's a...
It's actually kind of exciting.
All right, so we, any further questions or discussion on this issue, on this question? All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right. And we move on to Article 28, and it's a zoning bylaw change regarding vehicle storage. Now, the, you know, we had some photos go by us today, and I guess one of the questions, you know, there was a bobcat in that one photo, and would that weigh 7,000 pounds or probably less? And how would something like that be affected by this kind of a bylaw?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, you have to, things like that are already covered in the bylaws, and you have to keep those kind of around the backyard setback or have them screened.
It's construction equipment.
Right.
Okay.
So like, if you had a trailer or something like that, you have to keep it in the backyard or an enclosed garage, basically out of view, and that was, this doesn't change any of that.
Okay.
You know, I think, one of the things we talked about last time around was, not that we didn't know what to do, but that it was a complicated issue, we were evaluating options. And I somewhat resent the insulting tone of the resident's comments about our process and how we go about these things, because we've spent a lot of time talking to him about them. And I don't, and so there's no bamboozling, there's no secretive task force, just a group of people who, by virtue of their service in the committee or their role with the town, have a, you know, higher-than-average knowledge of the town's bylaws, and trying to recommend solutions to the select board and then to town meeting to address some of the issues that we see are of concerns. And people can say all they want, it's an enforcement issue, but there, we don't get a lot of complaints about this, in terms of a lot of people complaining about it, but we do get a few people that complain about it a lot. And that's one issue, and the secondary issue is, from an enforcement standpoint, it is a challenge, because you handed out the thing about the commercial vehicle, or what is a identification of a passenger vehicle? Any vehicle which has a weighting rate of 6,000 pounds or less, or is a sport utility vehicle or passenger van, or which is a pickup truck or cargo van of the one, of the half-ton, three-quarter ton or one-ton class, per the manufacturer. Well, what we're proposing, that 7,000-pound GFW is a three-quarter ton pickup, which would otherwise be characterized as a passenger vehicle, another thing you just handed to you. And one of the issues is, what can you do now, and what would be prohibited? The issue of the lettering is really challenging, because not every vehicle that is lettered is a commercial vehicle. And not every commercial vehicle has lettering, in terms of a vehicle that has a commercial tag from the Commonwealth. By and large, commercial registration of a vehicle is a choice that the owner of the vehicle makes based on their taxes and their insurance. There are plenty of vehicles with regular plates on them that have lettering all over them, because it's a take-home car from a company, or they have a home business that they want to advertise. And so that's where what is a commercial vehicle has been somewhat of an enforcement, you know, nightmare for, for us. We, we seek to clarify it by saying, vehicles over that certain size, and what would other be considered a passenger vehicle, be allowed to be parked overnight? The change, which I want to give Paul credit for, was it has to be registered to that address. And that's something I think can be meaningful, because if someone does have a business and they live in, they own, they own the business and they own the vehicle, and their vehicle's parked at their residence, first of all, it makes it, so we know who it is, we know who the vehicle is, it's a resident of the town, and not somebody who's just there kind of stashing it overnight, or somebody who's flipping a house or something like that. And then the other part of this is, we, we take the part, we take the reference to lettering out, because one of the things that's happened with our signage bylaw, we've talked a lot about, is there was a Supreme Court case a few years ago, the Reed decision, that has really expanded the view of the First Amendment when it comes to yard signs and things like that. You can have yard signs, you just can't have them in the tree belt. In fact, what we've learned is you can't restrict the content of stuff, of yard signs. And if I want to buy a passenger van that is a passenger vehicle, and puts, you know, stickers on it, saying all kinds of stuff, and leave it in my driveway overnight, I can do that right now. And that's bylaw would not prevent me from doing that. And so when we get into the issue of lettering, it is, and we've talked, spent a lot of time, this is one of the reasons why it's complicated, is we've spent a lot of time trying, trying to hash out the spillover legal issues, and we feel like there's no perfect solution to this, but what we're recommending is something that will clarify the bylaw and make it more about the size of the vehicle, more than what's on the side of it.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Any further questions? So right now, if a person isn't meeting the bylaw, they get a fine? Is that what happens?
I mean, the, the police have a difficult time enforcing it, and most of it ends up being referred to the building commissioner.
So there's no fine?
There can, there can be a fine.
But it hasn't been, no, there hasn't been fines, like in this situation with the photos?
Fines have been issued, but there, there are fines that can be issued for that, although I will tell you that the vehicle isn't lettered.
Mm-hmm.
The vehicle in question is not lettered. It has a commercial plate, but it doesn't have lettering on it. You know, so there, the lettering isn't the issue, even though, you know, despite the comments, is, lettering isn't the problem. And, you know, you know, I think it's just, we talked about the other night, it's more for me, you know, I do respect and understand people's desire to maintain quality of life, and I would argue that the bylaw changes that this same secretive working group have put forward have all been intended to give the town government better tools to sustain and enhance that quality of life, whether it's the foreclosure and abandoned property bylaw, complete streets, I mean, you name it, the stuff that, I mean, she was, Marie's thing, but we've done a lot of work as a group to enhance, to have bylaws that enhance the quality of life. This one, to me, is more of a common sense thing. To have someone be able to have a three-quarter ton pickup truck with a plow on it for their own driveway, and still retain the right to put whatever they want on the sides of it, versus someone who has a commercial plate on the exact same pickup truck, and it may not even be lettered, and they both own their homes, they both live in their homes, they're not really running a business in, in a way that people are like, you know, showing up and they're, you know, mobilizing out of there? Why is one person being penalized over the other person? And it's because of the ambiguity of the current bylaw.
Well, also, from looking at those pictures, the mess of that street had nothing to do with the pickup truck. Had to do with trailers and bobcats and...
And those are already covered in a different section of the bylaw.
Okay. Marie, yes?
So your bylaw group was able to meet, to go over this?
No, we didn't. This was all done, mostly over emails.
Oh, okay, so planning and zoning were able to give a opinion on this?
They offered some, they will give a report at town meeting.
They will?
Yeah.
And then what I didn't, so there's no fine put into this?
The fines already exist in other sections of the bylaw.
And so how much are the fines if someone, is it per day?
I think it's 100 bucks a day.
That high? Okay. And that's if they violate the current existing language? I'm trying to figure out the difference between the two, because this is sort of, and you're getting rid of the commercial lettering, but you're also deciding it must be registered at the address, you're adding that, but then I don't understand this gross weight thing. What's a 7,000 pound? So Richard, how big is your truck or Stevens?
Three-quarter ton is getting on up.
It's a Chevy 2500, so it would be...
Is that your car?
No, mine's smaller.
Yeah, but the one you used to have, it would be one, same size as the one you used to have, but just a bigger engine.
Yeah, larger, the frame would be larger and wheels would be taller.
Okay, and so what is it, six wheels? Who has six wheels, more than six wheels?
A dually.
A dually.
Yeah, that's a one, that's a three-quarter.
So people drive six wheels for just driving a car?
No.
No, if they're going to pull a trailer.
No, trucks.
I mean, some people do have pickup trucks that are duleys, just to have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're, you're truck guys, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, normal people can have a dually.
They can have to.
Well, I don't know what they're going to do with a dually up here, but they can have them, sir.
And it says more than two axles, so you're saying it has to be a two-axle truck, and it has to be 7,000 pounds or under, and it can have no more than six wheels?
Hmm, that would be a dually.
That'd be a dually, but a six-wheeler is a dually.
But I don't know if they got a three-quarter ton dually. Don't they get one ton for duleys?
I don't know.
I think, I think you have to get up, I may be wrong, but I've never had the need to have a dually.
So when you say six wheels, it's two in the back?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You've seen that before, the two, they have two wheels in the back, they got the fenders that come out over, but it's still a pickup truck?
Okay, I guess so.
Go to Bigfoot sometime.
Well, I'm from Indiana, we used to go to the monster truck thing, so...
Listen, Indiana, if you're not driving a dually, you're just not even trying.
It's not Bigfoot, no.
And then I guess my other question is this, so when you have a truck, so an example is the picture that Mr. Fox showed us where you have a truck and then you have this wooden contraption built on the back, that would be okay because as long as it's under 7,000 pounds, you can do anything you want with it.
Right, but so could I.
That's what I'm saying, anybody, I'm not saying just that, I'm saying anybody can do anything they want.
Anybody can do that now, but if you do it for a business is where this bylaw would come into effect, but it's just, like I said, anyone can put a leaf box on the back of their truck.
Leaf box, that's what it's called, leaf box, okay.
Anyone can put one on there right now. And that's, like I said, that's, that's the common sense aspect of this, trying to separate what are we really trying to prevent? And, and I guess what we're looking at, we don't want people who maybe drive truck parking their big rig in their, you know, driveway overnight or having large box trucks or things like that. That's what we're really trying to prevent versus someone who, you know, maybe has a plumbing company and has, you know, and I hope he's not watching, Bill LaPlante is my neighbor and he does garage his vehicle, but he's got a Tahoe and it says LaPlante Construction on the side. Well, if he parks it in his driveway overnight, that's a bylaw violation where our bylaw's currently written, but he doesn't have ladder racks on it, he doesn't have, you know, a trailer or towing, but that's what we're trying to clarify. Because right now, like I said, if somebody wanted to complain, if he let in his driveway overnight, he'd be technically violating the current bylaw and it just doesn't make any sense.
So Richard, does this six, 7,000 pounds rather than that 6,000 pounds make sense? Or are we now, are we supersizing our trucks?
No, no, I don't think you're super, because you can have a different suspension that takes that payload up pretty quick.
Well, like I said, the intent was up to, and we looked it up on, online, but the intent is a three quarter ton pickup truck. Now, the definition of passenger vehicle he just gave out goes up to one ton. I know East Long Meadows bylaw has it one ton or less, or even less than that, three quarter ton is less than that.
I, you know, I wouldn't see anything wrong with even a one ton vehicle. I, I'm sure everybody's after commercial vehicles because you can have a one ton vehicle yourself because you haul a boat or a three quarter ton. I mean, you can use that for, for actual usage. It's not, it's not strictly for commercial.
Well, Bill was talking about his neighbor who's got a plow and you may have people who like to plow their own driveways. You know, does that make it a, a commercial business? What if they buy a plow truck from somebody used and it still has the old lettering on it from the person they bought it from, but all they're going to do it for is their driveway?
Well, but the, I don't know, the, the commercial vehicle law aspect is commercial lettering. I don't even think the license on it, as long as there's not decals up and down the thing, I don't think anybody would find offense in that.
So you don't want to get rid of commercial lettering? Because he's getting rid of commercial lettering.
Well, commercial lettering is usually the one thing that you look at and it just stands out and it can cheapen areas, I mean, let's face it. It can. I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to park it all around your house, come on, that's, who's kidding who?
So do you want to say and commercial lettering?
No, I'm not, you guys discussed this issue, that, that's already been discussed.
No, this is the first time we're seeing it.
Oh.
This is the first time we're seeing this.
You're in on this one.
You're being bold back there, just when you thought it was safe.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was safe, huh?
Now, I did have a question about the registration. Taken a registered vehicle, but that doesn't mean necessarily they own it? Or does a, does that mean they have to own it to register it to their address?
Well, the company may give it to them as a take home vehicle, but they would, they would have to get the company to register it in their name.
Okay, so the company could still be the owner and then they'll be registered?
I don't know, I mean, I didn't really get that far.
Well...
Into that research.
That would be, something I'd be interested in, because, because if, if they, if the ownership is tied to the registration, then, you know, we're going to eliminate, eliminate a lot of trucks because people aren't going to want to give their employees a truck.
I think the vast majority of these issues are people who maybe own a business and have vehicles that may have their business name on their vehicle.
Right.
But they don't operate their business out of their home and they, but they may have a garage, I mean, there's many garages that you can't park even a half ton pickup truck in. And so they may leave it in their driveway. And the vast majority of people don't complain about it because they're their neighbors and they own their home and they understand that that's how they earn their living and so we don't get a lot of complaints even though the vehicle is there and it is lettered. And so that's what we were really trying to address is those situations. There are still going to be situations that are bylaw violations. We're not trying to grant every commercial vehicle dispensation. It's more making it about the size of the vehicle and, you know, giving residents and making sure it's not people who are, you know, renting for a short term or, you know, you know, like I said, the vehicle registration is a much stronger hook for us than we have today. I mean, that strengthens the bylaw in many ways.
Oh, yeah.
And like I said, the lettering issue, you know, you get into some murky legal territory, I think, based on that Reed decision with it, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I realize Stephen never wants to hear my opinions from places I've lived before, but buckle your seatbelt. I've, I've been in the areas that have had the same problem you and they've always go restricting on size, that's number one, but they also had a restriction on lettering, anything that identifies as a commercial vehicle. The real catch 22 is the areas I've lived in, they actually provided an area where these vehicles could be parked overnight and we don't. So they acknowledge the fact, people have to work, they have to live, but they put a place where they could park the vehicles.
We built a fire station on top of that place.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that cleaned up the neighborhood, Stephen. And that's why it wasn't forcible because you couldn't have it at your residence, but you could have it in a commercial or a residential parking lot that was designed strictly for commercial vehicles. And we don't have that provision here. And it is difficult, you're right, a lot of the garages are small, a lot of the 1950, 60 homes or some of them are single car garages. It's a very difficult situation.
Well, they got to store their bobcat in there.
Yeah. But, but, you know, I have to be sympathetic too that the fact is when you got this stuff parked all over, it can get pretty sloppy. I can take you to homes right now that have got carts and snowplows sitting in their driveway.
But that's a bylaw, whether we change this or not, that's a bylaw violation today.
Yeah, but I mean, right now, right today. And, and, and they go month after month after month and it, it starts to look a little trashy. I mean, the pictures we saw tonight were certainly not what I would like to have around my home. I think everybody in this room would acknowledge that. That's not the type of environment I want to see when I go out my front door.
But if you looked at, if you looked at those pictures and played spot the violation, he's got one where there's a car parked behind the truck, you wouldn't be able to see the plate. So you would have otherwise no idea that that is a commercial vehicle.
I agree.
And so the bylaw violation's there and we made a list.
Yeah.
We have intervened and I think the suggestion that we've done nothing is really misleading. We, we've tried to, I mean, the biggest thing is we don't show up with a fine book. Our number one priority when enforcement is to gain compliance.
Yeah, but you've been a town manager for five, six, seven, eight years now, you should be used to that.
And what, you know, there are times where we gain compliance and then a few months go by and they're back to doing the same old things and then we go back.
I mean, the complaints that say you're not doing anything.
Oh.
That's, that's turf.
I mean, I never tire of hearing that stuff, Richard, but you're right, I am kind of used to it.
But you always raise the occasion, I think, settle down. But see, there's, that's not what we want in our town law.
No, agree, but that's already covered.
Yeah.
But are we fining? Are we just warning?
We are following up and we are warning and when the circumstances demand it, we fine.
Yeah.
We don't fine first, ask questions later, I can tell you that. Because that is a quality of life issue too.
Now, do we need to, because you mentioned the fine, there's warnings, is it in the bylaw that there's, after three warnings, you get a fine?
No.
Or is it 10 warnings?
It's, I don't think it's really that specified.
Then my question is not how many times have we gotten complaints the past year, but how many different properties have we gotten complaints on?
On stuff like this?
On stuff like this.
Specifically, commercial vehicles?
Yes.
And I asked the police chief that and he's working on that data, but it's not that widespread. It's a few people that complain about often.
Are we talking 10, less than 10?
Maybe 10, less than 10 of them.
Less than 10, okay.
At least ones that have been across my radar screen is less than 10.
Less than 10.
Again, I think the, the number of times where people are parking, lettered or commercial vehicles, otherwise commercial vehicles in driveways overnight are way more than that. It's just...
I'm talking about complaints.
It's just, it's just that most of the neighbors don't have the same kind of issues with it and we want to make, and we want to take some of that subjectivity out of it and allow for, for some of these, for some of these people that are, like I said, otherwise just living in their homes and, except may get a car from their workplace.
And what about debris of, of logs and things like that? Is there bylaw on that?
Yeah, I mean, there is an unsightly bylaw, but not, nothing that specifically says you can't have a wood pile and if someone has a wood stove and burns wood all winter, they're going to have a wood pile.
Yeah, it's, it's difference between debris and wood piles.
Yeah, to who?
Yeah, to who?
To who?
I know to other towns, in other towns, I've seen issues in regards to piles of wood like that.
I mean, yeah.
But I was just wondering, do we have a bylaw, but I guess we don't, yeah.
I mean, as an attorney, you know how gradient this stuff gets and how subjective it gets and a lot of times it's settled in front of a judge.
So the question is, do we want to, are you comfortable with this, Richard? Did you, the commercial lettering?
Yeah, I, it's hard. It's a very hard thing to do, but you, I've just found where I've lived, but yet they did have provisions for the commercial vehicles where they could have a lot where they could go park them. Like they say, they could park them at the high school, but they're not going to do that. But there was a place to park commercial vehicles, but they were not allowed, any vehicle that had lettering on it, they didn't care about the license plate, it was the lettering, it was the visual commercial vehicle.
And our, our bylaw, the current bylaw does not talk about license plates, but nevertheless, that's a complaint we're getting.
Yeah. I think, I think I could defend that all day long because that commercial plate doesn't mean anything to me. The commer, the lettering and the truck style and all means a lot.
I mean, I'll tell you that this isn't just about one resident, one house, one interneighbor dispute. This is about the proliferation of lettered vehicles or, you know, take home vehicles that may have, you know, business logos or whatever on them in our community and that people live and work in our, or live in our community who happen to have these vehicles. And does the current bylaw really reflect our current, you know, our current, you know, community?
Marie?
When it comes to the lettering too, I mean, it's a simple solution to that is that for $50, you can buy a set of magnets that you could just put it over the lettering on the door for overnight use. So I mean, it's not as if all of a sudden a person can't drive their vehicle home, it just means they have to cover the lettering for $50 and those things last forever. So I hate to see us to get rid of complete lettering or, you know, you've seen some of these vans that, who knows what they could be advertising? And then, then you start talking about content.
Our town meeting's not that friendly to bylaw modifications anyway, are they? Normally?
It depends on the, on the bylaw.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, like I said, this is something that drains a lot of resources and it's, you know, I appreciate being told how to, you know, handle our departments, but the fact of the matter is a limited number of people making a significant number of complaints does end up, and we, we pay attention, we follow up on all complaints. That's the one thing we do. We may not find that each complaint is justified, but we follow up on all of them.
Are you soliciting complaints?
I wouldn't think I'm soliciting them, but they some, they somehow find me nevertheless.
Sounds, sounds like you were saying, I want more complaints to justify some of this.
No, I'm, I'm...
I'll whip up the crowd tomorrow.
I'm going with complaints.
Well, I'm sure people didn't realize, oh, we have this bylaw, I put a call now.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, this is something that we're generating internally. This is something that, that, that the building department, the police department, myself, we're generating internally because we know what a difficulty it is for us to be constantly refereeing in very limited circumstances. If, if you guys don't think it's the right time or the right approach, we don't have to have it on the warrant, I'm fine with that. I just, I, I felt obligated to my coworkers to at least give this a shot because it, it's a bad deal for them.
Well, we could also drop it off at the town meeting too.
In other words...
It's your choice, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lay down or to, to go to the wall for it because I, I, I agree, it's complicated, it's tough. You can see why it's taken us really till today to kind of nail down the language because it is complicated and there are legal issues well beyond our pay grade that affect us. And if you guys want to leave it off, I, I'm fine with that, but I just wanted to raise the issue on behalf of our departments that end up being put in very difficult, really unwinnable situations because of this bylaw.
I'd say leave it on and let's see what surfaces. We've had a discussion tonight, a lot of people have heard it.
The other thing is, I mean, if, if for some reason it gets abused and it becomes this nightmare scenario, you change it back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Change or modify it.
And that's where I think, I truly think the, we'll call it the Pasterzic rule, making it registered at the, at the house that it stays overnight is going to be the single biggest thing that's going to clarify all of this.
Right, yeah.
Well, also we have to start fining after three, four, you know.
Every situation's different.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I, I look at this and I tend to think that most people who, you know, who do have to bring a work home, a work truck home would not have a lot of difficulty with this, you know, and then hopefully, I know, I think of my neighbors and I'd like to think that they would all pass the test, I don't think the vehicles they have are heavy enough.
Make a motion to accept this article.
Okay, we have a second on it?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's up.
Oh, you know what? They're not highlighted, but Article 29, 30 and 31 all need to be approved.
29, 30, yes, I had those down there and I, I figured that was, so we didn't do this one, this is a monument sign on Article 29.
What's the difference between that and 30?
So the, the, the 29 establishes it in the definition section of the bylaws, which is a different section than the, that is referenced in Article 30. So to give the, to give the zoning board of appeals special permit authority to grant these monument signs, we want to make sure that monument sign as a term is defined in our sign definitions.
Okay.
So if you remember last, last fall, we did the window sign? Remember, because it wasn't, people have them all over, but it wasn't defined? You know, there are, there are monument signs that are in our community, they're just not defined in our bylaw and we wanted, you know, rather than kind of handle them on an ad hoc basis, right, with like a licensing agreement or something like that, give the Z B A special permitting authority to look at these and then at the same time impose some dimensional restrictions so they're not, you know, you know, battlements on the sides of driveways.
Okay, well, I really like the fact that it's non-digital, that these digital signs on the highway that tell you like, don't drive too fast, I mean, that kind of drives me crazy.
And the Pasterzic Rule 2.0, we want to make sure, we, I did add the word durable materials this afternoon because of Paul's comment today.
Yeah. So do we have a motion for Article 29?
So...
Any second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the description of a signed monument?
This didn't, so the planning board hasn't reviewed this one yet either?
No, I mean, they're going to have to, Walter's seen most of the stuff, Walter Gunn has seen most of it, but the planning board wouldn't review it till, because if it's not on the warrant, they don't need to review it.
Okay, so then they can always put an amendment on the...
They are required to report it or we can just say they hated it and we're not, and we're going to withdraw it. I mean, this, Article 29, adding that to the definition harms us in virtually no way. It's, it's in the defin, you know, you want comprehensive definition section. It's, it's in the defin, you know, you want comprehensive definition section, so Article 29 can stand alone even if we don't do Article 30.
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion on this article? So, you want to call for a vote? All those in favor of Article 29? Okay. We move to Article 30, which is a.
I missed the discussion.
This was it?
So, this now is the provision that gives the zoning, the zoning board of appeals, so, so Section 6, or Article 4, Section B, subsection 6, has a list of things that the ZBA can grant special permits for in residential zone. And it's, as you can see, it's somewhat of a, the, this is at the end of that section, and there's a, a long list of things ahead of it, including wireless telecommunication facilities, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff. But this would basically, these signs are, I believe, allowed in commercials, in non-residential zones and commercial zones, but this is for, we do have some non-residential uses in residential zones. And so, this would basically allow these types of signs to go in with ZBA approval. So, the, the two most obvious examples, and the one that kind of, one of the ones that kind of prompted this, is Twin Hills and who I know are looking at this, and also the Field Club. But you could also look at Bay Path University has, has one that exists by virtue of a license agreement with the Select Board. As another, it's a residential zone, but it is a non-residential use, and they have signage. Churches are allowed to have their bulletin boards in front, but if a church wanted to do like a larger monument sign in the front of their church, and it was in a residential zone, they could not do it. So, these things are where it's, in the, to me, the benefit is, it improves wayfinding, meaning it makes those res, those non-residential uses easier to find in a residential zone for people who may be coming here who don't, aren't familiar with the town. And then it also gives that non-residential use the opportunity to do a, you know, landscaped improvement.
Move to approve Article 30.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, so this says 15 square feet, so that would be like a five foot square, five feet long, two feet high?
Three feet wide, high.
Three feet, 15.
Or, I mean, or you can, I mean, somewhat like, I don't know, 3.8 times 3.8, whatever it is, like, you know, there's different ways to do that, signs have different dimensions, but yeah.
But as long as it's, it's, so five foot, that's not that, I mean, I guess I could live with that, because I wasn't sure if we should have.
So, if it's a small, if it's a smaller, if it's a small, if it's a smaller non-residential use, it's 15 square feet, if it's a larger facility, it would be 40 square feet, which is still pretty small.
Right, still not that, right, that harsh, yep. But they still have to get, the zoning board would still vote on, they would send this.
They, they would need a special, they couldn't just, this is not by right, they would still need to go to the ZBA to get approval for this.
It's not by right, yeah, so it's, it's, okay. Any other discussion or questions on this? Okay, all those in favor? All right. And then Article 31?
So, 31 is the infill bylaw. It's virtually unchanged from la, from what was put on the warrant last year. I know the, just in, in email conversations with the guys, with the task force, there was interest in putting this back on, but doing a better job explaining it at the town meeting. One of the things actually, Bill, based on your feedback, I added a sentence in the description, it says, "The proposed language would give the ZBA clear guidelines for approval that would prevent an infill lot from being developed in a manner that would be out of context from the surrounding neighborhood." And that was, I think, the thing that kind of got lost in the translation last year at town meeting. Item E, "The proposed dwelling is or shall be consistent with the architectural styles, scale, setbacks, and character of the immediate neighborhood, a butters and a butters to a butters," was one of the things that we, we tried to convey, but in the discussion at town meeting, it was, like I said, those houses, those two houses on Lincoln Park where we used as examples, this could actually help prevent something like that from happening on an infill lot. You know, like I said, I don't think we did, I know I didn't do a very good job explaining this last year, and so we thought we'd bring it back, try and explain it a little better, and if the town still doesn't want it, then that'll be the end of that.
You know, a lot of this is subjective, you know? The character of a street or a neighborhood should be, you know, very mixed.
Yeah.
You know, is it, does it conform or doesn't, you know, I mean, they.
Yeah, and then it's, you know, I know developers, you know, they, they'll say, oh, yeah, it's going to be the same height, and then next thing you know, they say, oh, we're just going to have some, you know, just for looks, we're going to put these windows on the top, and then next thing you know is the third floor, and so.
But this gives the ZBA to review all of that in advance, and if they do something like that, then the building commissioner can shut the project down, revoke their building permit, you know, make them, you know, tear the thing down. I mean, that's, it can get to that. And the ZBA, and Bill, to your point, yes, it is subjective, but the ZBA does do this and other, there are other special permits or approvals of the ZBA, or variances the ZBA will grant, where they are asked to make somewhat subjective judgments about, you know, does it fit in the context of the neighborhood? They go out and, you know, in addition, like if there's, if they need, if somebody needs a variance for setbacks on an addition, they'll go out and look at the surrounding neighborhoods and say, yeah, it fits in. So, they, this subjective judgment they make is, is par for the course for judgments they make on other aspects of the zoning laws. That's one of the reasons why we thought this, this, like I said, fit well, we just did it, I just did a terrible job explaining it.
Marie.
How many lots are like this in Longmont?
Yeah, and we, we have that information.
Was it 20?
Yeah, it was, it was a pretty small number.
Okay.
I only think you're going to see a handful of these at most get developed.
It might be to your advantage to actually show.
Yeah, that's one of the things, we wanted to map these out and do a better job, like showing what the, the maximum exposure was. I mean, I don't think anybody, you know, I know the school department doesn't believe that the student populations are suddenly going to surge, because somebody built a 1,200 square foot, you know, one and a half bedroom house.
Well, I know last year, this came before the town, and the town didn't support it, and I just, I don't see why I would vote to put this on the warrant again. You know, they just looked at it, you know, less than a year ago, a year ago.
There was no reason not to put it back on.
Well, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking for the board.
Because they can put it on every year.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it being driven through this group.
Again, this is one, if you, if, if the board feels like, you know, the town's already spoken on it, and we don't want to put it back on, I have no issue with that. The, the discussion at this task force was, the, the floor debate at town meeting, we believe, didn't really reflect the actual language of the bylaw, and the, and the, the debate kind of got outside of what the parameters of the, of the language were, and so the, and so we all agreed, it failed, but I think based on some assumptions about what it actually said, about what it said versus what the language actually is. And so, our thought was, go, take that feedback, go back and watch the, the, the recording of the town meeting, and make sure that we present this again, we do it in a way that meaningfully addresses the feedback we got last year. But if the board feel strongly that the town has spoken on this one, then we can take it off, it's just, it's just a recommendation.
I don't like it.
You don't like it either, yeah.
Well, then it looks like it wouldn't pass even if we put it on.
But I'm not the town.
No, we're talking about.
Yeah, we're talking about two, two, it's four of us, 2-2.
I'm not for it, it doesn't mean that it, the town shouldn't decide, it's not my decision.
Yeah.
So, you might vote to put it on the warrant?
No, I wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, if we can, I can't really withdraw, it's just a recommendation, but.
Yeah, so it didn't get the warrant, because we've never had the votes here.
Well, I would, I mean, just, I don't know if you guys want to moralize that, or I can just withdraw, I can, I can withdraw it as a recommendation. That's fine.
Yeah, because if you're 2-2, that's still a loss.
That's, that's a failure, yeah.
Yeah.
And we already did 32, didn't we?
Yes.
I just found a point, 32 marks, I'm just reading the minutes. Mark's motion was to have the town treasurer, the OPEB trustee, in conversation with the client rep over at the state retirement system. There were some other things that we needed to prove, so you see that there's a couple other resolutions on there to follow along with this in order to make this happen.
Okay, so the treasurer authorized to execute investment agreement, so it's, it gives, it delineates the powers of that.
Right, right.
Trustee.
But we needed all those votes at town meeting in order to move this forward, otherwise we'd be waiting until the next town meeting.
All right, move to approve Article 32 as now written.
Okay, a second? I'll second it. So, this is really just to make sure that we're all set for custoding this OPEB fund?
So, we could start investing that OPEB fund, rather than just leaving it sitting in the.
Right, we still have a couple forums to get into, and we will get the further documentation that do not need town meeting vote into them in ample time for that. I think their next meeting is June 6th, so we will have everything lined up for June 6th, and hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll be turning over our funds to be professionally invested. You can see, I also put in a sentence about what their rate of return has been over the last seven or eight years, of 10.3%, so it's a fairly substantial rate, rate of return that they've been able to achieve. Right, over the, it's an average.
Can I put my funds in there? That sounds pretty good to me, and it, it's, it's, I think it's a good plan for our OPEB funding, because we have a lot of catching up to do, so.
I mean, there's, there's actually two benefits, not only the rate of return that goes in there for the trust fund to grow quicker, but in the actuarial studies, they will now be able to use a, they are able to use a standard higher rate of return, so that our actuarial unfunded pension liability will actually come down, because just of a, an actuarial type of provision that allows them to utilize different numbers.
Okay.
So, we just bring down our unfunded liability?
A little bit, I don't want to say how much, but, you know, once we have that actuarial study done with this provision, it should come, come down.
Well, at 41 million, it's, any little bit is a lot.
Yeah, and so our, so this fund will, will be building, and we won't touch that, the primary account.
We won't really be touching it for years unless for some reason we, we need it, you know, for, you know, an emergency purpose, we would be able to draw on it for health insurance purposes only, but we would be able to draw on it should we need some of it.
But we currently cover those health insurance purposes out of our budget.
Right, and in operating, in an operating nature, we pay as you go, so we are paying all our, all our current liabilities, it's these future liabilities that are accruing that this will address.
Yeah, which is what most towns our size would be doing, just paying out of their budget, and we're just planning for the future, so it's all like a good plan. Any other questions or discussion on this OPEB thing? Okay, should we call for a vote? All those in favor? All right. So, that's the, the last article that we have, the rest are citizen petitions, and we would need to sign this if we reach the.
These are being asked of you to sign, too.
Yeah, the signature page is, is standalone, so we'll obviously strike the Article 31 and, and just tweak the, the summary descriptions that, that the town council commented on, otherwise it is as it is.
Okay.
A move to close the warrant?
A move to close the warrant, is that, do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of closing the warrant? Okay, approved, the warrant is closed, we'll sign the papers, and we can move on.
I have a question about the citizens petitions. Stephen, do you need to be ready for, if the one in regards that's asking for $115,000 to be spent, are you or Paul going to be ready to address where the money's coming from?
Yeah, I mean, basically, what it's going to do, it's going to, with the estimates that we currently have, is going to throw our budget out of balance. Minimally, you might recall that we're utilizing the 2.3% instead of the 2.5, that was about $93,000, so minimally it's going to throw us out of balance by $60,000. We are using estimates, it's not the first time that we've gone through a spring town meeting with the budget out of, out of whack. We'll wait to see what the final state numbers are, we'll wait to see what the final estimated receipts are, we'll wait to see what the final new growth is, to see what actions we have to take at the fall town meeting to put it back into balance.
So, then it would be coming out of the operating budget, you wouldn't look to bond something like this to keep us in balance?
For the $155,000, no, we wouldn't look to bond that.
I mean, you could take out the operational stabilization fund if you wanted.
We, we could, but it, it has raised and appropriated.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to balance the budget, if, if we needed to take it out of the operational stabilization fund, I mean, like I said, we, we can still keep the 2.3, we'll have next year's free cash to look at, to make it work if need be. There's just a couple flaws in the air, again, we are using estimates as we know them today.
But then, if we're going out, we're going out of a, we're not allowed to have an unbalanced budget, right?
We are not allowed to have a balanced budget when we go to set the tax rate.
Okay, so in other words, we would balance it in the fall?
We would balance it in the fall.
And so then we would be, we wouldn't be using free cash for operational funds, but we'd be using it, this would be considered capital investment. But then we got to figure out the cost of maintenance of that for the next, for the years after that, correct? So, if we could just figure out what all that's, what all the different pieces have to be moved if that passes.
There's no real increase.
There'll be no real increases in maintenance?
There'd be increased electrical bill for the well, but we already cut, we already mow the grass out there anyway, it's going to be the same mowers doing the mowing, I mean, and I would, I mean, we are, like I said, that's a part of the planning process we're engaged in. This project is already getting $100,000 from CPA, though earlier in the warrant, it's already approved. You know, we weren't really involved in the drafting, just so we, you know, I don't really know what's intended.
Well, I just know that, that the residents are going to ask, well, if we really pass this, what will happen to our budget?
Yeah.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I said before, I regretted I wasn't here when the warrant was discussed, I really mean that, I was having a lot more fun than this, but this item that Marie was just tiptoeing on, I wanted to take a minute and talk about it, Tom. 2017, it was $80,000 given from CPA to this project, and now there's three articles on the current warrant that runs that total, if all approved, $485,000.
Wow.
Is there anybody in this room can tell us anything about that project from the Select Board? Okay, there's something wrong with this. I don't know anything about it, town manager may, assistant may, someone may, but we don't know anything about this project. What scares me more is that this has got a $155,000 citizens petition that's been tacked onto it. This is not the direction that we need to be driving our community in, it's a very dangerous direction. The further, what I read through the, the statements on it, it's kind of difficult to get a trace to go through them, because they're all different, but the one statement states that this just takes care of two out of 13 fields, or 15 fields, whatever, this is just two fields. So, if I did the math, being conservative, this is, this is well over a $2 million project. It looks like it's being piecemealed in by any way that can be, and what, what I've got a problem is, who's authorizing the plans? Where are the plans? What has been approved for the improvements of that field from this town? I don't know of anything.
I can answer if you want.
Okay.
So, when this came up last year, the $80,000 for the well, that was the citizens' request, and they requested the whole thing. I think they requested $200,000 or $300,000. It was a citizens' petition to the CPA. My comment to the CPA was, we have just recently learned, and as you recall, we're going, we learned, I don't know, two years ago, that Wolf Swamp was Article 97 for recreation, which was something that was news to us. So, at the time, when I saw that this effort was going on in citizens' petition, I said, we should just get on with trying to make, you know, schedules for improvements to the fields over time, the parking's a disaster, there's a lot of safety concerns, the fields really need to be upgraded, let's just start doing, take a multi-year approach to kind of improving Wolf Swamp field, make it the best it can be. So, I said to the CPA, I commented on, they asked me, because the facilities are in the jurisdiction of the town manager, and the citizens' petition was the first I'd heard of it, so I said, you know, I think, I, I support making Wolf Swamp, and making improvements to Wolf Swamp field, but let's, let's really do a more, and I called it a master plan, but let's really do a more thoughtful job of planning out the whole thing, so we know what the end product is going to look like, even if we take multiple years to get there. And I told the CPA at the time that the number one priority we're going to address first is traffic and safety. The $135,000 CPA article for what we call the Ring Road, that's the one we put in, that's the one the town put in. The other one is another citizens' petition. Again, I didn't know until we got there that night at the CPA hearing that there was a citizens' petition for this. Should I have known that there was going to be another citizens' petition? Probably, but we had been working, and, and I will tell you that the, the master planning effort did get sidetracked by other priorities, but we did, Barry, Mario, myself, we did retain a landscape, a civil engineer, landscape architect, and I think we're meeting tomorrow to kind of look at the layout that we think will make sense going forward, to then figure out where's the parking lot going to go, what's that going to cost, and so I think by the time we get to May 8th, we'll have a much clearer sense of what the long-term projection is going to be. And I had set, put in those concepts that we had received from the architect in a previous Select Board pack, and I had been reporting on an ongoing basis that we were in this master planning effort. In terms of the irrigation system project by itself, you're right. I mean, ultimately, that gets put on the DPW to execute, just like the well project is getting put on the DPW to execute, but the preparation, the concept and the preparation of all of that is just being done by a citizen.
But what I said, I asked the Select Board. But what I said, I asked the select board, we're the ones that approved the warrant. Is anybody aware of any details on this project? And all I got was blank stares. And, and I don't, I just can't imagine that we piecemeal into a possible three million dollar project without it being identified and put up on a board right there and let's talk about it as a community. Is that the most important need that we have for money? I just don't like it, Stephen. It's piecemealing.
I understand, Richard, but it's a citizens' petition.
I, I don't care what it is. This is CPA funds going in here. If the town manager has to go address these groups and say, look, guys, we don't want this stuff approved right now. We're not ready. You're piecemealing, you're, you're enabling the piecemeal procedure at this point.
No, I'm not.
You have to be.
I'm not.
You didn't stand in opposition to this.
Because I don't oppose in concept making improvement to Wolf Swamp Field.
Okay, well then give us the.
What I oppose, what I oppose is, do I oppose how it's being done, gone about? I would rather that the groups that want to see this done, come to us, say, here's what we'd like to see. Let us plan it out, get their input, which, you know, Barry has been working with the Parks and Rec Board on the master plan. They've looked at the concepts, they've commented on it. It's, the problem is, Richard, it's two separate tracks. I am doing what I think to be the right thing, which I hope you would agree with, which is take some steps, gather some information, lay it out long-term, and then go forward. And even if you're piecemealing the amount of money you're asking for each year, you know when you're making your first request, what the full picture's going to look like.
Four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is not a piecemeal as far as I'm concerned. And that's what's, that's what's on mark this year. That's a lot of money. Close to half a million dollars for something that we don't even have a board on. We have no idea what's being envisioned in this community.
But that's not true. So I have given, the, what the layout ends up looking like will be the result of the planning effort they were engaged in, and I have given you guys those boards, those concepts.
We've seen these boards? Why does everybody give me a blank stare when I ask if anybody knows anything about it?
We know about the Ring Road. I don't know anything about.
But there was also a set of concepts that we got from a consultant. I think I put them in a packet.
Plainfield layout.
Different, different Plainfield layouts.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the major improvements you're talking about.
But you have to, the, and one of the things that my concern is, is that the irrigation system, does, the irrigation system should come after you've settled on a field layout.
I would think so.
That's how I was, that's how I was going to propose the, the series of projects, but our first thing was parking and traffic, just like we said last year, and that's what the Ring Road proposal was. Now, the Ring Road proposal is going to be modified to something different than a Ring Road because it's, we are still planning, but we wanted, but we knew we couldn't get it all in one year.
I will, I will say it once again, and I will shut up. What you're doing is piecemealing into a possible three-plus million dollar project.
When you say.
Without, without it being presented at one time.
When you say what I'm doing.
What is happening in this town?
Right, but I'm, I'm in for a hundred and thirty-five K and I've given you the boards.
Okay, and, and nobody seems to know much about this thing.
None about the irrigation project because it's a petition.
For a possible three or four million dollar project, I will contendly say that is wrong.
I don't love the way it's happening either, but I want to know, I want to be held accountable for what I'm responsible for and, but not held accountable for things that I have no control over.
Yeah. So all we got, Tom?
Well, I've spent a lot of time on those fields and I do realize that having a well would be valuable in irrigation. And, you know, when you look at, the majority of field space is used for, you know, kids who are developing their skills and they don't need to have this pristine flat field. But there are a couple of fields that need to be competition, you know, ready. And, and so you, when you look at some of these big lacrosse and soccer tournaments and field hockey tournaments.
You didn't even listen to what I said though, did you, Tom?
Well, no, but if we had two fields, I think that's all we would need.
I just said I want to see plans, Tom.
Yeah, right.
Okay, let's find out where we're spending money on. What's the end of the road look like? Right now, we're piecemealing into this. It's another one, Long Meadow Ring of Ding. We're going down this, this road at a hundred and fifty miles an hour and we have no idea what's at the end of the road. That's all I'm asking.
What I see at the end of the road is a big grassy field.
Okay, well then we're all happy.
I don't know how much it's going to cost. Yes, Marie?
I guess this goes back to one of our original concerns and that is our priority of capital projects. And I think Richard touched on this a little bit. And there were some capital projects we did not agree to fund this year that I think were pretty big priorities and we need to put this up against something like irrigation in the fields. I mean, there were security cameras we decided in monitoring, we're not going to put in the schools. Instead, now we're talking about taking a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, which is substantially more. And so when you have CPA and you have capital planning, it's very hard to coordinate that. And then when you have individual citizens say, well, this is what we feel our priority wants are, and then it does, it mess, it makes it very difficult for planning, long-term planning. And I appreciate the fact you were trying to put in a master plan and then all of a sudden everyone says, well, that's master plan. We want it now and we not want to wait a year or two. And I think that, I don't know how we can get the discussion going among the various groups that there are priorities and you, if you really spend the hundred fifty-five thousand dollars here, that means we're not buying this, we're not fixing this, we're not maintaining that. It's not going to go to that resource. It's going to now go to this resource and a small group of people are, are going outside that plan. So it is concerning how you handle that. I know you're trying to get the capital planning and CPA all to coordinate, but it is hard.
Hold on a second, I'm going to push back on this. Don't conflate the, the work I do with CPA and capital planning with the citizens' petition.
No, I'm saying this is a third element that's difficult to handle.
The CPA and capital planning, other than the timing of the delivery of the capital plan, went very well this year. Went very smoothly. Highest levels of integration they've ever had. And that's all been building, really, when you were chair the first time, you were pushing for more integration between CPA and capital. We've done that. And I said, I give you credit for that. That's something that, that, just like the joint meetings on the budget. Much higher levels of integration. I'm going to be blunt. Richard's point is right on, is on point and it is a charter issue. This is a form of government issue. The CPA gave a citizen who applied for money, or a group of citizens who applied a hundred thousand dollars and said, work with the town, let's come up with a plan and do this over multiple years. I don't know how they felt about that answer, but the next thing we saw was another petition to the town directly for a hundred fifty-five thousand. People can judge that for themselves and why Wolf Swamp Fields that have served the town for decades are suddenly no good. I, I have my theories about the timing of it, but I'll let people judge that for themselves. But what I, what crabs me out is this isn't something I have any control over. Change the charter. Put together a charter commission and change the form of government if you don't want to see this stuff going forward. And I think people have heard me say, you have the tax, the tax stealing task force. Is open town meeting equipped to make difficult financial decisions that are coming in the future?
Well, I guess we'll find out in May.
Yeah, but that, that's what this is. And Richard, I a hundred percent agree with you, which is why I was taking the approach I was taking. This is completely outside of that and I, you know, but I, I can't control that. I thought we, I thought we did have it under control when the CPA made the decision and gave us the two tranches of money and said, why don't you guys work together and move this thing forward at the same time? And the next thing you know, we get a citizens' petition for more money on top of the CPA allocation. You know, the, the charter is clear and the state statutes are clear. Citizens' petitions are citizens' petitions and it's Mark's, you know, paint every house pink with purple polka dots. You know, that, it's just the way it is. And that's where I'm like, I would love to do it differently.
Any further comments on that? So we will move to the storm.
Did you assign that warrant? Is it all closed and signed?
It's closed and signed.
Okay.
Yep. So we would go to the stormwater credit policy, which it looks like you revamped a different policy to meet your needs. Is that, because there's a lot of stuff crossed out, I wasn't sure.
Oh, no, no, no. I sent, you know, sometimes, and Mark's not here, he's usually the leader of the pack in this regard, but Mark likes to see sometimes marked up versions of documents to see where the thought process has gone.
Oh, okay.
And I thought in this case, we've gone back and forth, you know, Paul's had made comments, I've made comments, the consultants made comments. And I know they're confusing to read, but I gave the marked up version so you could see how the policy had evolved over time.
Okay, all right.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be done tonight. It's not a part of the warrant, does not need warrant approval or town meeting approval. So if, you know, it does somewhat inform the budget, but, you know, we could certainly do it at the next meeting if, if people want more time to digest.
Well, it is a lot to take in.
Let me just distill it very briefly.
Yes.
Non-residential properties. Okay, so commercial, educational, not-for-profit. Non-residential properties can file for an abatement or a discount or a credit, we call it credit, if they do certain things to manage their stormwater onsite. And there's a list of practices that they can engage in and there's an application that they have to submit to the DPW. I'm going to guess we're going to need some outside help to help evaluate with these applications because we don't have any stormwater expertise right now. I hope that as the Stormwater Enterprise Fund develops, we can maybe get some in-house expertise, but I'm going to guess we're going to need to have somebody, an engineer, review the applications and go out and look at the site and look at the, the things that non-residential property person is doing, a property owner is doing. So there's an application fee to defer those costs. The applications are only for up to five years and I think it's up to fifty percent. I don't have it in front of me. And then there's another set of, of abatements that are basically tied to or mirror, if you will, existing tax abatements that we have either through bylaw or mass general law for veterans, for seniors, for things like that. And those are, because they're residential properties, there's no application fee, I don't think.
No, they would, their initial application would actually go for their taxes and then they would automatically be applied.
If they qualify for the tax abatements that are, that are already in existence, then they would automatically get the, the abatement on the stormwater utility fee. So no application process, no measuring.
All right. Because I was, I wasn't sure, like it looks like a lot of the folks that we have here, the colleges and universities and then, you know, that they would be, they would all be able to apply for.
If they do public educa, public education's a big part of the MS4 permit that are, that is a new requirement.
Okay.
And so if colleges, universities, and even longer schools assist in the education of our community on stormwater management or stormwater stewardship, I guess. Like they, they maybe do core, like curriculum, parts of the curriculum or sci, like science curriculum has stormwater units or something like that? And they make those class materials available online for the public, then they could get a ten percent discount.
Okay, so then they would make, and then would they share that with our high schools? I guess we'd have to.
No, the high school could be, the high school could offer it and then the town of Long Meadow, I mean, would get a discount.
Discount also. Okay, all right. Because I was trying to figure out that, so thank you for that. Any other questions on this?
Where is it?
It was in the packet. I emailed it out separately last week.
Oh, I remember reading it, but I just didn't see it in the packet now. So I have to go back to your other email on it.
I emailed it out last week.
I see it, okay.
And it's.
I'd like to hold off to the next meeting then.
Yeah, because a lot of it is similar to the kinds of credits that you already offer for citizens.
Half of the thing is, it's the automatic abatements for seniors, veterans under our, you know, you guys have seen that spreadsheet before where we have a pretty long list of abatements that I think most of them are state statute.
There used to be abatement, when I was reading the stormwater utilities, there was abatements for things like planting of trees and bushes and things like that.
Those are the BMPs.
Those are the BMPs, okay.
No, planting a tree isn't going to get you an abatement. It's more underground stormwater storage, you know, basically the less you discharge into these town stormwater system, the more of a, of a credit you can get. But you have to spend money to do that. It's not just planting trees.
Some of them, it's, it's certain types of trees, certain types of bushes are supposed to absorb a lot of water and that was what some people did.
This is a list of BMPs that are eligible and I don't know if planting trees is on it.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it when I first read through it.
They have dry wells.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
These things here.
Yeah, it's, and these are all based on, like I said, the engineers, engineering firm researched other credit policies. So bioretention area, a bioretention area could be a sway with certain trees and bushes, but not just, you know, a tree in the middle of a parking lot isn't going to get you there.
No, no, it's usually a special type of.
Yeah, but in a, a special type of vegetation, in a special vegetated area that is graded to catch the water. So constructed wetlands, same thing. Wet basins, dry wells, infiltration basins and trenches, leaching catch basins, subsurface infiltration structures, porous pavement, water quality swales with four bays, proprietary separators, sand and organic media filters with pretreatment, and extended dry detention basins with four bays and proper proprietary media filters. I've written that twice.
Marie?
Other towns also who do the stormwater utilities, it's, it's not, you know, if you end up paving something, that it's, it counts against you. And then also cutting down trees. So if you, if you cut down six trees on your property, you now increase. So are we doing?
There's nothing like that because every, every residential property is treated as one unit.
It's treated as one unit.
Right, so no matter how you, if you have ten trees, if you have a hundred trees.
So it's not, it's, it's not variations on, so someone's got a, someone's got a gravel driveway, they're going to be paying the same amount as someone who's got a, what do you call it? Paid.
So the impervious areas of the town, which, which drive the ERUs, which drive the fees, are based on mass GIS flyover mapping, which is how everybody's done it. And we did it that way because it's a standard unit of measure and we're not out measuring driveways and counting trees. And mass GIS would not pick up on one tree being taken down. So the most clarifying way is to charge all residential properties one unit. And then for commercial, it's, it's easy to see parking lots and rooftops. And so then they, the ERUs are calculated based on those impervious spaces. It's, we actually simplified it quite a bit. It's a lot, it's a lot easier to manage the way we have it.
So if, so if a specific homeowner captured all their rainwater runoff in a barrel and used it to water their lawn.
No, 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 no credits for residential unless you're in that list.
No credits for residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, the enforcement would be too difficult.
Well, I know the enforcement might be tough, but you know, one thing would be to encourage people to make better use of water.
I don't know anything about.
You know, I think in the future, Tom, we could take some of the stormwater revenue, if we, if we raise the fee and generate enough of it, you could generate, you could get discounted, you could offer discounted stormwater rain barrels. I know I used to have, when I lived in Lowell, I had one because they, this is a part of a EPA grant, they offered grain barrels, but you know, there were times it just, it didn't work all that well. And if you're going to offer credit, then you have to offer the ability to enforce and inspect. And I don't want to get set up for a situation where we're giving up credits with no ability to track it or enforce it.
Yeah, but I, I like that idea, Stephen. I like the idea of then looking at specific things people can do and, and, you know, like rain barrels or if, if there was, you know, like people do home energy audits and they tell you exactly what you should be doing to reduce your energy costs. If we had, eventually if there was someone in the town who could look and say, see this, see how this is all washed out here, you know, we should offer this kind of a solution and maybe some of that stuff would be available. and maybe some of that stuff would be available.
Yeah, and I started off, it's a Select Board policy, so it can be amended very easily in quite a time, so.
Yeah, and that's, the, the strength of the bylaw is, it gives the Select Board the ability to set the fees and modify the policies.
Yeah, so, and the, because it would be nice to encourage, you know, especially if someone may not realize how a certain situation with their home and the runoff or their, their driveway is really causing a lot of erosion. They might be next to a gully, and, and may not even think about what that erosion's really doing in the long run, so.
Hey, Stephen, are you aware of a, a complete street grant that we've got? Two hundred and two thousand?
I think I sent something out to everybody when we get the award.
Was that, was that way back?
That's actually, Andy was here explaining those one night.
I wasn't here. Right, did, when you, when you-
Yeah, I just want to remember, you had mentioned, so that's old news.
Well, not to the reminder in Long Meadow News, it's last Thursday's news. No, Representative Ash, who's supported our application, just put out a press release saying that we had received it, and so that's why the news coverage kind of trailed our announcement to the board.
Okay.
February weekend, that's, that's a project, and you talked to William Street.
Yeah.
Two, two locations on William Street, right by Community House, and then right up here at Grassy Gunner. That's the same one.
And that's what you're considering, the race sidewalk there? Or the race sidewalks are only in front of the Community House?
No, no, race crosswalks there, potentially.
Potentially there, okay.
And really upgraded flashing signals and things like that, to, like we have on Converse Street, to really identify pedestrian crossings there.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion on that, I saw that, too.
Well, I thought you had.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's just showing up now on social media. It's about three weeks late, isn't it? Fake news.
Okay. Any other questions on the stormwater credit policy?
Late news.
We'll return to that in a future meeting and discuss it more. And I have a resolution here for the, a certificate of congratulations presented to the Long Meadow High School, class of nineteen sixty-eight, in recognition of their fiftieth class reunion. And given with my hand, with my hand on behalf of the Select Board of Long Meadow, on this twentieth day of March, on the year nineteen, or twenty eighteen. And so we are going to present them, I don't think we need to take a vote on this resolution, but it's, uh-
Again, if you, you know, if you clarify, they wanted more proclamation, to be honest with you, they got a kind of short notice, and I didn't get a chance to write something up in greater detail, but their reunion isn't for a few weeks. But, I mean, I, if, if the Board were to object, I would just put a cover letter from me on that, saying, hey, congratulations, you know, welcome back to town, because a bunch of people calling, I mean, people come from all over the world, a lot, pretty long conversation with bill squires about it. And so I may put a cover letter that more graciously welcomes people to town, but on short notice, this is what we got.
Okay, this is the best we can do, and I'm glad we can do something. That's fiftieth, that's, uh, grade sixty-eight, they're just before Woodstock, just a year before, so, um-
I was there.
And you were there, all right. You may have seen some of these guys, some of these graduates from Long Meadow, class sixty-eight, they're fresh out of school.
What was interesting was, I, not to belabor the meeting, but I had been talking to them, he said some of these people left, graduated in nineteen sixty-eight, went off to college or wherever, haven't been back since.
Oh, yeah.
And I said, I would be interested in hearing their take on the community, because we hear all the time about town's going to change, it's going to change the character of the town, and I'd be interested to hear how many people come back and say, geez, the town really, I mean, a lot of homes have been built since nineteen sixty-eight, but I'd be interested to see if people say, either the town is completely different, or geez, it really retained its residential character, so.
Well, we know the high school looks a lot different.
The high school doesn't look a lot different, it does.
We put a comment box right there at the, and people will drop their comments and recommendations.
I'm crashing the reunion, I'm going to start in the cocktail hour, walking around asking people what they think.
They'll spot you. They will spot you.
Sure they will.
So, all right, so we have this resolution, and then, do we have any subcommittee reports?
No, we're having our Energy Task Force meeting Wednesday night, if I get back from the storm in New York, and Scantic Valley, we-
Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday, yeah. I won't be at that, so Paul can give us a update, and then we have the ceiling thing on the twenty-eighth, is it? Twenty-eighth, so.
Following Wednesday.
Ooh. All right, and yeah, I do have, we need to talk about, I do have a volunteer from town unions.
Okay.
But that's, you know, evening meetings aren't going to be great, because it is a volunteer thing, I don't-
Yeah, we were talking about trying to make them at five o'clock sometimes, to make it easier for the, the union representatives.
That's still not, yeah, I mean, if we could push it even to four o'clock, that would be helpful, because it's the, it's, it's the head of the DPW Union, which is the largest union in terms of numbers that we have, and he, his, his day ends at three.
Oh, okay.
At three, that's due to some teachers.
That's due to teachers, right, teachers end at three-thirty, so.
So we could bring that up at our first meeting. Did the press release go out for the other residents to, because we've invited residents to apply to, I think we have four positions?
That was in the paper Thursday.